Start off with a roll call. I'm clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Croods.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
You. All right, we'll move on now to opening ceremonies. Pastor Bosser, we got you for the invocation.
Good to be back in the house, sir.
Good to have you back in the house.
Yes. Let's all bow our heads. Lord, we are so grateful for you and for getting us through this moment and for good leadership in our city, in our fire department, in our police department. We're so grateful for all of them, and I'm grateful for the great things that are happening right now. And I pray that as we get back, and we are all getting back in many things, Lord, you know that, but as we get back as a city together, that we would just go to higher heights, greater things that we've never even thought we could do that we can now do. And we love you, Lord, and we're grateful in your mighty name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, let's stay standing for the pledge. Mr. Adams, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of the greatest nation in the world? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to public comment. And it looks like all four, all of them are on number four? Two listed for 921.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All on four.
Yes.
All right. So let's start the public comment with Jennifer Delet Snyder. Please come up, have a seat up here at the podium.
There are two of us, we just came together.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Delet Snyder, Executive Director of Join Together Northern Nevada, a nonprofit substance abuse prevention coalition, and also a resident of Sparks. The timing of the marijuana drive-through topic is interesting since my agency is supporting an educational program this afternoon with Dr. Kenneth Finn, a Colorado physician and national speaker, who will be training local healthcare providers about dangerous drug-to-drug interactions that occur when patients are using marijuana. My agency collects and examines data relating to substance use issues, and I want to share a few key points. Marijuana use by middle school students rose 70% between 2017 and 2019 in Washoe County. These are sixth to eighth grade students. And we have more high school students in Washoe County reporting marijuana use as compared to the rest of the state and the country. This should be concerning to you since legalized marijuana is only for those over 21, and yet our youth are already gaining access to marijuana through dispensaries at even younger ages. Data shows that teens who use marijuana daily are over 60% less likely to complete high school than those who never use. They're also seven times more likely to attempt suicide. What statistics would make a difference in your decision about allowing a drive-through dispensary? How about the costs associated with addictive drugs, healthcare, lost worker productivity, crime, law enforcement, and need for foster care and homeless shelters? How about the hindrance of economic growth or having resources diverted from future city investments? These are societal costs paid by taxpayers, employees, and employers. As city council members, I believe you would like to advance the future of our youth and not stunt it by allowing for additional access to an addictive drug. When I think of a drive-through, I think of getting fast food and eating the fries as I drive away. Why would you want to provide faster access to marijuana with the potential of the person using it as he or she drives away? In Nevada, if a person is stopped while driving impaired, the person is first tested for alcohol use, and if he or she tests positive for alcohol, there's no test given to determine if the person has marijuana in his or her system. This is an interesting point since behavior questions on national surveys show that marijuana users often use alcohol as well. This means we don't know exactly how many people are getting DUIs that also have marijuana in their system. The marijuana industry has repeatedly said it wants to be treated like the alcohol industry, but Nevada doesn't allow for drive-through alcohol sales, so why should the city of Sparks allow a drive-through marijuana dispensary? As you ponder this, think of your children and grandchildren and what they're already exposed to, and ask yourself if you'd like them to have even greater access to marijuana. It's time to focus on being the solution and not fueling the problem of addiction.
Thank you. Lee Fisher?
Hi, so my name is Lee Fisher. I'm a resident of War II and I've lived here all my life, and I graduate this Friday from Sparks High School.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So marijuana, it's an addictive drug. There's no denying it or hiding it. I already see kids my age and kids younger that have access to this, which is pretty confusing since it's only for 21 and older. And when I see the kids use marijuana, those my age and younger, they use it out of desperation. They think it's a way to solve their problems when it only delays it. They, they would rather push their problems away rather than facing it, like people do with drinking sometimes, like whether it's in a movie or something, the term like drinking our problems away, that's what they do when it comes to smoking instead. But as we know, underage drinking and smoking is not a good idea, especially when it just pushes your problems away. A drive-through dispensary, it would make it even easier for the customers and those underage to have access to this. And this allows for more leniency and more gray area concerning the consumers and those others who are using it. And who's to say that those in the drive-through cars are all over 21? Who's to say that the drivers are gonna wait until they're home or not driving to smoke? Like Jennifer mentioned earlier, if I'm gonna go through a drive-through and get some fries or whatever, I'm not gonna wait until I'm home. I go through the drive-through for the convenience and quick speed that it has. So the logic there would roll over to this. You're not gonna wait if you go through somewhere for a sense of convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that your first time speaking in public?
Maybe.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ardina Perry.
Thank you, I couldn't hear them. Can y'all hear me?
Yep.
For the record, Ardina Perry, Goodwin Road in Sparks. I sent a letter, and I assume all the council members got that, and I just kind of wanted to put a perimeter around the context of the letter. One, I'm very anti-marijuana drive-through, so we could put that right out in the front. That said, I used to grow dope, I used to sell dope, I used to smoke dope. That skirt's still here from the 60s. So for me, when I, when I look at this, I'd like to see the city of Sparks actually back up and look at our policies on a lot of drive-through businesses. Because unless that parcel is built from the ground up with the intent of a drive-through, there's no way it doesn't infringe on other businesses. It's just the nature of it. You go to any, and I mean the donut shops, all of, so it's, but marijuana is like a touch different, like the folks behind me said, it's, when I was in business, back in the day, many of my customers would sit out on the road in front of our house and finish their joint before they came up. And the difference between alcohol and pot is, you don't get high off alcohol fumes. So I think we need to consider the characteristic that we're looking at when marijuana is smoked and the fact it does go into the atmosphere. And we need to look at that because a lot of these cars are gonna be off the business parcel. And other than that, I wish we'd look at general drive-through because I think it's gotten out of hand. If you can't get out of your car to go pick up your own blunt, you know, you shouldn't be smoking it. That's just my thought. At some point, we need to have to look at the community as a whole and, and not just as a single business. So maybe sometime in the future, if, if we wanna look at it on a case-by-case basis, but we're trying to do infill and what have you in older Sparks and use some of these existing properties, they're not even built for it. You know, they're not even built for it. They've got no place to line up their cars within that street. So that's it for me. Thank you for hearing that.
Thanks, Ardina. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. We do have two emailed in. The clerk will put those in the record. Oops. You can tell this is my second meeting back. We'll put that in the record and it'll be part of our, our meeting record. All right, let's move on to agenda five, agenda, item five, agenda. Anyone, addition, subtractions, or excuse me, moving anything around? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to approve the agenda with one, one request. If we could please move item 9.21 up in front of 9.1, please. Move item 9.21 up in front of 9.1.
Okay. Looking for a second, our additions? You know, on mine, I don't have the screen up to show who's voting. This is a new system for us two folks, so.
Mayor, I won the race, so I'll go ahead and I'll move to approve the agenda with moving 9.21 before 9.1.
Okay, so I got a.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman Dare. I got a third by Councilwoman Vanderwell. I think we got it.
Do you need a fourth?
All right. All those, please vote. Excuse me. It's just opening up for the second. We're gonna have to go to a voice of vote then.
Oh, here we go.
There we go. All right, motion carries, 5-0. Okay, we're off to a fantastic start. All right, approval of the minutes, item six. Looking for a motion, any additions, subtractions, corrections for the minutes? Okay, got a motion by Councilwoman Bybee, second by Councilwoman Vanderwell. All those, well, please vote. There we go. I gotta change that whole habit of a year and a half of conducting meetings. I'm waiting for Mr. Dare to vote.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Bybee should state her motion, please. Just state your motion.
Oh, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for May 24th, 2021, for the record.
All right, motion carries 5-0. We're gonna get there. Yeah, we missed the second. Can we go back and do the second?
He's gotta record the second. I'll second.
Now we're moving on. Okay, on to item seven, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. And let's start with 7.1, Juneteenth Day. We have someone here, Stephanie? Ms. Bybee's gonna read this proclamation for you, and then we'll ask you to say a few words at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall then be in rebellion against the United States, shall be then thenceforth and forever free. Whereas more than two years passed before June 19th, 1865, when Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston, Texas, and the news that slavery had been abolished reached African-Americans who were still enslaved there. And whereas, since June 19th, 1865, Juneteenth Independence Day has been one of the most recognized African-American holiday observances as the oldest national commemoration of the ending of slavery and is also known as Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, June, June, Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth recognizes African-Americans' survival of the unknowable adversity and hardships of slavery through strength and determination and commemorates the day when the last slaves in the United States were finally free. And whereas historical documents indicate African-Americans were business and property owners in Virginia City by 1866 and contributed to the early mining and development of the Silver State and construction of the Hoover Dam. And whereas despite the significant historical and modern achievements of African-Americans, African-Americans and other people of color still face many hardships that hinder realizing our nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Juneteenth is an important opportunity to reflect on and renew our commitment to the work that remains ahead to end in equity. And whereas on Juneteenth, we're reminded to honor and celebrate the achievements and contributions of African-Americans have made and continue to make to the city of Sparks, the state of Nevada, and our nation. Now therefore, on behalf of Ed Lawson, Mayor of the city of Sparks, we do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021 as, as Juneteenth Day.
For the record, my name is Stephanie McCurry. I am the current president of the Reno Sparks NAACP chapter here in Reno Sparks. To Mayor Ed Lawson, to Councilwoman Bybee, and to the Sparks City Council as a whole, my first reaction to the formal invitation was that this was extraordinarily thoughtful to put on the agenda, to my knowledge, without provocation. And so I thank you for recognizing, and I'm gonna make it personal, our holiday. And, and making that proclamation and putting it in the record for City of Sparks. Councilwoman Bybee, you took all the words out of my mouth. I had all of that prepared. So I'm winging it because I had all the history written down. It is personal for me. I still have current family in Texas. My father is from Texas. My aunt is still there and owns 10 acres. And I would like to think that my, my own ancestors or those that came before me received that word. And we call that word in our, in our community, joy. And it gives me great joy that Sparks, City of Sparks is making this proclamation and joining in the celebration of our independence in this country, claiming our rights, exercising our rights, and as it was said in the written word, that we're still fighting the good fight. So I recognize this body, and I thank you, not only from Reno Sparks NAACP, but also who has joined me, Marcia Dupree from NEPCUS. If you're not familiar, NEPCUS is Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society, and they were already celebrating when I moved here, 20-plus years ago. Yes, ma'am? And so my children have been educated not only by NEPCUS bringing awareness to this holiday, and I could not leave NEPCUS out. That also is a sister nonprofit with NAACP. And, and so I have to make sure that credit is given where credit is due, that every single year, NEPCUS puts on the Juneteenth Celebration that my children have always, now, now adults, have always participated in. And NEPCUS is the reason that my children, even though I would have given it to them, that they celebrate it, they are educated on what it is, and they understand what it means and the responsibility that they have to carry forward. So we thank NEPCUS for making sure and commemorating this holiday. This is, this, this belongs to NEPCUS. With that, I also, just in case, I wasn't sure if you were prepared, Marcia, this is a celebration not only for us, but for everyone. So I brought in flyers, and with your permission, I will leave them out front on the table. Our celeb, our celebration for Juneteenth will be this Saturday, 12 noon at Dick Taylor Park, right adjacent to the Evelyn Mount Community Center. Everyone in this room is welcome to join in the festivities and, and whatnot. So I'm going to relinquish the floor over to Marcia and let her have a few words.
I'm just excited that, to be here, to be here to proclaim it. I'd just like to say thank you all for thinking about us and, and what we contribute to our nation, to our society, and knowing that we're all a part, working together for unity and recognizing diversity within our communities. I'd just like to say thank you. And again, you're invited to our event that's coming, that's coming Saturday, June 19th, from 12 to 3:00, and we'd just love to see your face there if you can be there. So thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you, guys. You gonna go take a picture?
Yeah.
You want me in the picture?
Yes.
Mayor, can I say something? Mayor, do you mind if I say something?
Go right ahead.
Before you go. I just wanna say before you go, this is an important day. I just wanna say, for me personally, I get to share this, I, it's actually my anniversary on the 19th as well, and I didn't know it at the time, but I'm in, my wife, we've married 28 years, and my, my wife's an African-American woman. And I wanna say for me personally, watching all the different things that have unfolded and happened, and I love that our city stands on this. But for me, I can just tell you, I, it means so much. So thank you for being here and thank you for, for being here. I just, I'm gonna actually get emotional here and say, I'm gonna go.
Okay, anyone else from the council? And I, and I wanna tell you that this was without provocation. This was something that came across my desk, and I said, why aren't we doing this? I've been on this council for 10 years. I've not seen us do this before. So every year that I'm mayor, we will see you this time, okay? Thank you.
And I would also like to add that I've been working in the last, actually, it's been almost a year with Patricia Gallimore and Elvira Diaz, and with Councilman Anderson, and we are finally coming close to having a diversity commission, and we want to do it right. So we've had community conversations throughout the year that are, have been really beneficial, enlightening, shared thoughts and information, and then going into COVID and vaccinations and, you know, a lot of conversations that I think have been very productive, and we're finally, finally close to actually seeing a diversity commission here in the city of Sparks and look forward to involvement in that diversity will include a lot of different, a lot of different aspects representing the people in our community. So thank you for being here.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you, ladies. All right, let's move on to item 7.2, proclamation for Men's Health Month.
Well, not quite as exciting as Juneteenth, but it is Men's Health Month, and with the proclamation, whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live on an average of five years fewer than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas men who are educated about the value of preventive healthcare and prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members are more likely to participate in health screenings. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and their happier, healthier children. And whereas, the Men's Health Network worked with the United States Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. And whereas the Men's Health Month website has been established at the www.menshealthmonth.org and features resource, resources, proclamations, and information about awareness, events, and activities, including Wear Blue for Men's Health. And whereas, Men's Health Month focuses on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testic, testicular, and colon cancers, and citizens are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical check, checkups. Now therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor, City of Sparks, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Men's Health Month.
We didn't have anyone here for that one, okay? 7.3, commendation Sparks High School and our resident councilman here, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, if we can have Jasper and Chris just come up here and I'll read this in, and we'll go from there. Thank you both for coming down today. I appreciate it. We'll start with you, Jasper. So whereas Jasper Milgar Pinto, a senior at Sparks High School, recently won the regional championship for shot put with a throw of 46 feet, placed third in the, sorry, chat. Placed third in the region. Yes, I agree. Region for discus and brought 16 points home to the Railroaders of the Northern Nevada 3A Track and Field Regional Championships. Whereas Jasper Milgar Pinto has been a multi-sport athlete since his freshman year at Sparks High School, competing in football, wrestling, and track. Whereas in 2019, Jasper Milgar Pinto took state runner-up in wrestling and was part of both the state qualifying 4x100 meter team and runner-up track and field team. And whereas this year, Milgar Pinto was honored as lineman of the year for the Northern Nevada 3A West League. And whereas after graduating from Sparks High School, Jasper, Jasper Milgar Pinto plans to attend college and law school and become a lawyer. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, I do hereby, do hereby join with the city council in commending Jasper Milgar Pinto for his recent wins at the Northern Nevada 3A Track and Field Regional Championships and wish him success in all of his future plans. And then I will do, take care of you, Chris. So whereas Chris Cormier, a freshman, a freshman, I wanna make emphasis on that, a freshman, at Sparks High School, recently won the regional championship in the 400-meter race with a time of 52.78 seconds, placed in top four for the 100-meter race and brought 15 points, 15 points home to the Railroaders at the Northern Nevada 3A Track and Field Regional Championships. Whereas Chris Cormier is a first-year Sparks High School student who previously attended Dilworth Middle School, where he played basketball and soccer. Whereas Chris Cormier represented the Railroaders well in his first year, competing in athletics at Sparks High School, and his future in Railroader, Railroader Athletics is bright. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, I do hereby join with the city council in commending Chris Cormier for his rare freshman win at the Northern Nevada 3A Track and Field Regional Championships and wish him success in his high school career and beyond. Do you guys wanna say a few words?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna say thank you, 'cause like all four years of Sparks High, I, I pretty much just dedicated my whole four years into my academics, but most importantly, into my athletics. And by, and getting this achievement just meant a lot to me. And like playing all these sports, like football, wrestling, and track, like doing all those helped me like be better in the, in like the sport after that or the sport previous to that. And I just wanna say thank you, 'cause without sports, like I don't know what I'd be doing right now.
Congratulations.
I think we're into a photo op.
You ready to come down, Lawson?
I'm coming.
You're the serve. Coach, you can come down. A whole way, Chris. You put it in the water there, Coach. You've got some great athletes and great shoes.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Sorry, Dan. Go Floyd, you can get up there too.
I already did.
Well, we were looking at you. My lovely PE teacher from my sophomore year.
Let's get in the photo. We're getting in the photo.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anyone wishing to take a consent item out of order? If not, I am looking for a motion. I got a motion by Ms. Vanderwell, will you read it, please?
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.3 as submitted.
And a second by Mr. Anderson.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. All right, as previously stated, we moved item 9.21 up to the very first item. Who's going to present this, Mr. Crutz? Mr. Rundell, Urington's finest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, here to present on this item. At the March council meeting, Councilmember Abbott requested the city manager bring back an item for the council's consideration on possible direction to the city manager to direct on marijuana establishments to be able to have drive-through, drive-through facilities associated with them. Currently in the Sparks Municipal Code and the zoning ordinance, it prohibits drive-throughs to be associated with medical marijuana or retail marijuana. Councilmember Abbott's request was that potentially that could be stricken. This request today is not to amend the code. This request today is simply to provide direction to the city manager to have staff go and propose amendments to the code. Because it's an amendment to the Title 20, we would take it through Planning Commission and bring it back to city council if in that, if indeed that was the direction of the city council. Prior to bringing this forward, I did, I did research and found that the City of Las Vegas or North Las Vegas have recently done amendments along these lines. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from the council?
I'll begin. For me, for me, I'm not fully one who understands the necessity of this, and I purpose, I don't actually like it, trying to look at it. And I've read through it, and I've watched, and part of it has to do with the facts that were shared. I personally share concerns in the same way. One of the questions I do have when it comes to alcohol, is this something that is allowed in the City of Sparks?
Your question, Councilmember Dare, is could you do alcohol sales through a drive-through?
Yeah, because this is one of the arguments that I hear often, is that, well, it's supposed to be this and that. And so, if you can do it for alcohol, you should be able to do it for marijuana. I hear this argument. I don't necessarily go with that argument, but it is one of the questions I did have.
The way I see the question, the answer to the question is, the zoning ordinance identifies where you can do drive-throughs. A drive-through is not, is not defined as a restaurant in the municipal code. It's simply defined as a facility that provides for the sale of something through a drive-through mechanism. Alcohol is not regulated through the zoning ordinance. It is something that is regulated through an alcohol license, through business licensing. They go through the appropriate channels and potentially are awarded a license to sell alcohol. If you had an establishment that wanted to do a drive-through, and it was in a zoning district that allowed for drive-throughs, and you got, you had the ability to sell alcohol, I believe you would be able to do drive-through alcohol through a, through a retail business. And we do have one that I believe currently does that in Sparks.
Is that, so is that based because of a new zoning, somebody could do that? Or is that because something that was already in place and got grandfathered in?
It is not a grandfathered clause in this respect, because it would still be permitted in certain districts today. If, again, if you were allowed to do drive-through in your zoning, and you had an alcohol license, I believe you could do it through the retail sales of alcohol and the ability to have a drive-through at your establishment.
So for me, my big, so that's one of the questions, so thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it. I, I do believe in just even, things I've read, things I've seen. We still are in the midst of trying to figure out how to hold people accountable who are from DUIs to whatever, and I don't believe we're doing, in my opinion, justice in that. So I have, for me, no reason to see us move forward. So, I'll stop with that, thank you.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rundell, just some clarification, is this a Title 20 request?
This would be an amendment to Title 20 to the zoning ordinance, Councilmember Vanderwell.
Okay, which I believe that we've already requested that the whole Title 20 be open, haven't we?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then just one follow-up, because in doing research for this agenda item, the dispensaries have the ability for in-store walk-up, I mean, pickup and delivery. So, I don't understand if this is going to benefit their business or not. So, that's just a statement on that.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is tough item for me. I know that marijuana, recreational marijuana was legalized in the city several years ago. In my ward, Ward 4, we were the only ward that voted no, by 10%. So I am representing my constituents in Ward 4. As well as personally, I really take issue with and have had grave concerns about marijuana for a number of reasons. We still, even though marijuana's been legalized cross-country for several years, there still is not a good metric to measure the level, the level of THC in someone's system doesn't necessarily measure impairment. So there's not a good way to even measure impairment like we have with alcohol. So, people driving under the influence of marijuana and/or alcohol, the alcohol would show up, but the marijuana would not. I think it's a dangerous combination, and I think our young lady who spoke earlier of kids in a car, that you don't know who, what the age of anybody in the car is. And I, I think it is kind of when you pick up something drive-through, you're usually consuming it, you know, in between, wherever you're going. So, and that would hold for alcohol, which I don't support drive-through alcohol either. But for the marijuana, the fact that it's such increasing accessibility to it. And I understand during the pandemic, they did have curbside like everybody else did because of the restrictions with COVID. But this is different. This makes it too easy, too accessible, and I cannot, cannot support this change, so, thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, do we still allow dry, or pickup, even though we're after the pandemic? Are they still able to do curbside, I mean?
I, I don't know the answer to that, sorry, Councilmember Abbott.
No problem, Jim. I'll let it go, I'll call you.
All right, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, that's what's going to be my question, is just making sure that I understood. I mean, yes, you can walk in the store. I thought that you could also get it delivered out to you, as well as you can also get it delivered to your home. And I guess with that being said, I just, I don't believe that we need to take any other steps to make it more accessible.
Okay, Mr. Abbott? Okay? Any other comments? And we're, okay, go ahead.
Back to me, my millennial mind's a little slow. I get all your, I get all the comments, and you know, I look at, I look at a bank, how a bank, I can withdraw $2,000, no problem, and get it, and someone can run up and get $2,000 from me. At a dispensary, you can buy an ounce, $200 to $300. People can theoretically be robbed, walking with that product or with that money. I think we're looking at safety issues where I come down to it. I respect all you guys' opinions, and I know we got stand on the product itself, I get that. But right now with curbside, I found out the answer is, it is yes. We do allow that right now. That, I'm looking more at the safety for the employees, and as well as the patrons that are purchasing the product, so.
Anyone else? And that's, the veil that I looked at it under was safety for the employees, less chance of them being robbed as they're doing curbside delivery, less chance of them getting hit by a car. Frankly, if you want marijuana, you're going to get it, it's just like anything else. And if you're smoking it in the car, you're an idiot, just like drinking and driving, you're an idiot. So, but I'm, obviously, the mayor doesn't get the vote. So you got my opinion, and we'll do with it as, as we see fit. But we're kind of taking things out of order a little bit, because we normally don't allow comments on each individual item. But since we're new back, I am going to take a comment on a 9.3 later, but I'm going to open this up for anyone in the public wishing to comment at this moment, if they're, Mr. Chief, do you want to speak? Come on, did you fill out a comment card? Come on. State your name for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, for the record, Chris Croftworth, your police chief. I just wanted to obviously highlight a little bit of the effects it's had on our public safety stuff, so I've just gone back to some of our records. A little history for us, in 2016, when marijuana was legalized for recreational use, we started documenting when marijuana was part of the effects or something to do with calls for service that we went on. And from my belief is that we've definitely seen, obviously, what you folks have spoken to, is we've seen more access to it, very accessible. So some of the examples, I'll hit them really quick. In 2016, which was a partial year of, you know, it coming into effect, we had 84 actual reports where marijuana was an indicator of why someone was requiring our assistance. And by 2019, I kept 2020 out, just because of COVID, things did go down as I would expect. But in 2019, 530 of our reports, so we'd gone from right around 90 to 513. So one of the ones that really stuck out to me is domestic batteries with a marijuana involvement. In 2016, was it 15? And it went from up to 44, 42, and then 25 in 2019. DUI specifically related to marijuana, we had one DUI related to marijuana in 2016. And in 2019, we had 31. So the last three years prior to that were in the 30s as well. The one that really sticks out to me was runaway calls for service related to marijuana issues. Kids, somehow that was involved in the reason for them not wanting to be home. We had zero in 2016, 19 calls for service in 2017, 18 in 2018, and 11 in 2019. So, I just wanted to provide that, because obviously I'm the public enforcement side for you folks, so I just wanted you to see that it has affected some of our sides of things. So, that's all I had for you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to a motion. Or not. We'd have to do a not motion, right?
Nope.
We don't have to do a motion.
It would fail by lack, fail for direction by lack of a motion.
All right. Okay, Mr. Abbott?
I move to direct the city manager to draft a proposed, oh, sorry, I didn't click move. To draft proposed amendments to Section 20.03.02.5, medical marijuana dispensary and any other applicable sections of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow medical marijuana dispensaries to operate drive-through windows for the sale and dispensation of cannabis products.
Okay, looking for a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. All right, moving on, just moved on to 9.1. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a partial term ending November 1st, 2021. Mr. Crutz?
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Crutz, happy to be back in front of you in person again. It's been, it's been a long time, and it's exciting to be face-to-face again. As intimidating as this table can be sometimes, it's interesting, is that if I digress here for a few seconds, sitting over there where I normally sit and sitting here, it's a far different feel, and I'm only 10 feet from where I normally sit. But that said, Mayor Lawson is forwarding a recommendation of Casey Graham as his nomination to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, and asks that the council approve it. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Looking for a motion or questions for the manager? I got a, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Casey Graham to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for partial term ending November 1st, 2021.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second, although I'm still getting that, all those are in labor. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't take public comment, is there anyone who wanted to speak on that item? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to 9.2. Consideration, discussion, and possible direction to the city manager regarding proposed initiatives for, to address equality, inclusion, and diversity in the City of Sparks. Ms. Allison McCormick?
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and city council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And before you today, seeking direction on proposed initiatives regarding equity, inclusion, and diversity. In July of 2020, city council directed the city manager to take steps to establish a diversity commission for the City of Sparks. Since that time, staff has attended trainings, received advice from consultants, and gathered information on what other jurisdictions are doing in the equity and cultural competency fields. Based on that initial work, staff is working on three separate, but closely related initiatives to address equity, inclusion, and diversity in the city. First, staff is working on drafting a mission, vision, and values statement regarding those topics. Staff will seek community feedback on that draft, and then seek council's feedback. Second, staff is planning for cultural competency trainings for all city employees. By that, I mean every city employee in every department in the city. Additional training will also be provided to employees who are regularly involved in performance reviews, interview panels, or who make discretionary decisions that affect individual members of the public. Third, staff is working on a resolution to establish the City of Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. Council's original direction to the city manager was to establish a diversity commission. But in doing that initial work in the fields of cultural competency and equity that staff has started to do, staff believes that diversity is not exactly the end goal. It's more of an essential means to reaching those end goals of equity and inclusion for all. For that reason, we are recommending that the board's name reflect those goals and be called the Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. Staff proposes that the board consist of seven members, one appointed by each council member, and then two appointed by the mayor. Staff recommends that these members serve two-year terms with a two-term limit, so that new voices can continue to be heard over time. However, we are proposing that the initial members serve a mix of two, three, and four-year terms, so that not all, not all members' terms expire at the same time. Staff also recommends a robust application process consisting of a questionnaire, interviews, and non-binding staff recommendations for each seat on the board. We recommend that process to ensure, one, that members are interested in pursuing equity and inclusion in the City of Sparks, and two, that the board represents a broad mix of people from diverse backgrounds. When we say diverse backgrounds, I mean racial and ethnic differences, excuse me, differences in gender identities or expressions, differences in sexual orientation, differences in abilities or socioeconomic status, and other factors that affect the members of our community. Once the board is established, staff anticipates that one of its first tasks will be to provide feedback, and ultimately, a recommendation to council regarding that mission, vision, and values statement that I mentioned before. Staff is seeking council's direction to either proceed as I've described here, or with changes that the council deems necessary. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you. Ms. McCormick, I just have a really quick question regarding the application process.
So, um, will we as city council people, will we be allowed to see all applicants, applications? Also, so that we know who in our ward is is applying and things like that?
Yes, yes, I anticipate that, you know, we would, that staff would receive the applications, review them, conduct interviews with all the applicants, um, and then provide a recommendation, but provide each council member or the mayor, as the case may be, the packet of all the applications that were received for that seat.
Okay, are we able as council members, if you're doing uh interviews, to sit in on our wards?
Uh, if that is the direction from the council, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Bybee?
Uh, that kind of clarifies some of my questions because you're asking that they come from each of our wards, if possible. And I know with other commissions, sometimes if we don't get applicants from a ward, uh, would we, much like we do other commissions or boards, be able to um decide on maybe two people from from a ward if we're missing someone from a ward, or do we, and I know ultimately we want to see all wards represented.
We can absolutely draft it however the council desires. Um, if if you want a residency requirement for each ward, we can do that. Um, or if you want a residency preference for each ward, we can do that instead. It is, it is really whatever the council's pleasure is.
Okay, I I think it's important if we can get from all all five wards, uh but I know realistically, sometimes we don't. But we still want to make sure that that, um, the applications, you know, that we do have a full representation. So, the the process would go through, so the the interviews, the packets, and the staff basically vetting or going through, you know, will you, will you take applications and then eliminate some and only present to each council member who we have from our ward or who you recommend? And I know it's still up to us who we choose, but how is that process uh going to work? I mean, will we see the full application packet and pool? And then, I I agree with Ms. Vanderwell, I I would, I would love to be in on interviews, you know, so that we could get a better idea uh in the interview process to understand where people's direction and priorities are.
Uh, yes, you would receive the entire packet of all the applications that were received for your ward. And again, if if it's the council's direction to include each appointing member um in the interviews for their ward, uh, we can absolutely do that.
Okay, yes, I agree, I would agree with Councilwoman Vanderwell, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Want to start out by saying thank you very much for tackling this project. Wasn't quite as easy as we thought it would be for you, but appreciate you working on that. Um, and likewise, what what you're putting together looks awesome. I do want to voice one concern, um, the description of a robust application process. I understand why we want that, but I'm also a little afraid afraid of the fact that the people that we're hoping to reach and connect with may even be put off a little bit by that type of terminology. And I, again, I understand the goal, um, I think I under, I am in agreement with that both Councilwoman Vanderwell and and Bybee, in the sense that I I really would like to be involved in the process. And I I think we should be seeing all of them and and then, you know, we work as a group, but because again, who's gonna determine through that robust application process who moves forward and who doesn't? Um, in my opinion, I I'm an elected official, if they don't like decisions I've made, they can vote me out. So I I think it would actually be effective for us um to have a say in in that process as well, but I like everything you've done and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
Um, on the community outreach, do you have any ideas on how we're trying to accomplish that?
As far as recruiting applicants?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we would definitely use our Spanish language Facebook page, Sparks en Espanol. Um, and that would be a very low bar as a starting point.
For sure.
Um, I expect that we'd reach out to Steph McCurry, who was here to accept the Juneteenth proclamation, uh, as well as Ms. Dupree, who also came, um, and their two organizations. I would also want to reach out, uh, perhaps to the UNR International Center. I think if we have a, if we're going to have a residency requirement or at least a residency preference, um, you know, that may be of some limited usefulness because it is located in Reno, not in Sparks. But they may have some great ideas about who else to reach out to, um, to get Sparks residents who do represent all those different backgrounds.
I'd say the high schools too, I think we can get some youth, and I've tried to get youth on the SCAC. Like, I reached out to the student body president of Sparks High School and I wasn't able to get her, but I think that'd be an important, you know, just another voice. Um, you know, and it doesn't just have to be Sparks, we can do Reed and Spanish Springs, and partial to all the schools in Sparks right now. But yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Dare?
I appreciate uh Councilman Abbott's diversity on high schools because usually he doesn't go there. So, the, uh, I I just want to say I agree, I I I do believe that it needs to be uh Sparks wards represented. I think that's important and and that diverse nature, this is a very important conversation, not just now, but I would just say ongoing. Uh, one thing I I very much care about also is what subjects we're tackling, what are we bringing and do we get to be involved, because this is a little bit of touching the heart and culture of our of our community, which uh I know our job is budgeting and uh, you know, when it comes to certain practical points, but we also do get to be there to help in this way too, so I'm I'm hoping that as we walk down this road, that this conversation stays in front of us and that we get to be a part of it as we get to shape it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good work.
We're just gonna bypass the computer and say, Ms. Bybee?
And I'll just hit you and say, I like, yeah. Also, Allison, you know, there's several things besides, as we looked at the um equity inclusion, you also included other things besides ethnicity and race and age, Donald, uh, Councilman Abbott uh brought up age, we're also looking at seniors. So I think it's just as important uh that we have um an age and gender, not gender identity, but gender. So we want to have a mix, we we don't want it to be all women, we don't want it to be all men. And so I think as much as we can mix up the representation, I think the socioeconomic you also mentioned, and then abilities. So how do we, how do we reach those communities? I think we need to look at for abilities, what groups do we have that could provide access to members and people that would be interested? That that come from outside, um, you know, our, you know, the the groups like NAACP and your Hispanic community have groups and churches and people uh that we know where to go to try to re-recruit and make sure they know about it, but those other groups, how do we? We need to reach out to to make sure that we're accessing those groups too, to get that, uh, those voices heard at the table too.
I could not agree more, and and we still have more work to do to figure out how to reach some of those communities that organizations for aren't as obvious or as well-known.
And and actually, after Councilman Anderson's comments, um, I really feel like when we get to the interview process, I would like to be part of the interview for all of the candidates, not just those from my ward. I mean, I think all of us are invested in this and I think being able to see what some of the candidates were, even though I could only choose from my ward, I think that would give us, um, uh, you know, we'd get a better picture of who, you know, who we saw representative that might be coming from Councilman Abbott's ward versus people in my ward and kind of a better ability to have a real mix of people. Or if I only hear the people from my ward, uh, it it might duplicate what another ward was rep, you know, what came out of another ward as far as representation. So I think if we could see all of the candidates and go through the interview process, if that's possible, I would request that.
I think the city manager has some feedback on that.
On on that subject, yes, open meeting law is exactly where I'm going. If we're going to have a a quorum of the council there, we have to do it in a public forum. Uh, I'm afraid that that would serve to drive people away who aren't gonna want to come to an interview and sit in one of those chairs out there and and face the grilling. So I would, I would, I would just point that out as a as a concern, understanding the intent of of your wanting to participate. But maybe suggesting we have to find a way to balance the level of participation and driving, inadvertently driving people away who don't want to come talk to you.
Okay, and maybe the fact that we would see the packet, so we'd see what the pool of applicants were, and maybe I only saw and heard from mine in an interview process, we would still be able to see, you know, what the representation was across the board from everybody who applied. So maybe that will satisfy what what I'm looking for.
And to add what uh city manager Cruts said, Councilwoman Bybee, that was kind of the the thought process behind staff making recommendations is to make sure, you know, we didn't end up with a whole slate of, you know, people who are all from very similar backgrounds. You know, so we could kind of balance that that representation and and get a variety of folks. So I I uh I would join with the city manager and his open meeting law concerns, I suspect Mr. Adams would as well. But I I think the staff involvement in those interviews may be the the way to um try to balance that.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, and to follow up, I do agree with what the city manager mentioned, I thought that was a very good point. All aspects of the opening law would be in effect. Uh, that would mean no um contacting each other, talking about who you're gonna vote for, uh, who we should select, who we like, who we don't like, so uh, let's, all have to be individual. Not that anybody in here on this council would ever do anything like that, but uh, I gotta earn my paycheck too every now and then.
Okay, so do you have clear enough direction, or would you like some more direction?
Uh, I would love it if the motion would state that council wants to participate in the interviews. Um, it sounded like that was um pretty agreed upon among the group. So there is a second alternative motion there um in your staff report. Uh, so I would suggest uh using that as the basis and then adding city council members and the mayor's participation in the interviews for each of their appointees.
Okay, so my computer's just looking at me like, we're frozen up here.
We're frozen.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I move to direct the city manager to proceed with the proposed initiatives to address equity, inclusion, diversity in the city of Sparks with the following changes, and that would be to allow each city council member to view and be involved in the process for their ward.
Okay, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it, and can I ask another question or two?
Yes.
Um, if we have anyone that we've run into that's interested, can we just give them your email, reach out to you?
Absolutely.
Maybe a go waiting list, or maybe a waiting list, but a list.
Uh, absolutely, you can give them my email um or my phone number. You know, we still don't have the resolution put together, so it is gonna take some time. But I can start a, start a running list of people to reach out to when we are ready to open the application process.
And I think it'd be good too, like our event on the river, when whenever it is, um, where if we had a list of, hey, if you're interested, maybe not just for that board, for like SCAC, I struggle, I have an opening, there's no one on board one, I need a spot. But we we struggle on some of our other boards, just if you're interested, try to collect information of some of our, I think, our our events that we have in the public, would be a good, I don't know, good idea.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, if anyone has a public comment on this item, please, raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back, are we able to vote? Okay, we're gonna, all right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries unanimously. That one I know how to do.
Very retro.
Yeah, very retro, all right. Cons, uh, item nine point three, consideration discussion of possible approval of an interlocal agreement, AC five seven seven two between the city of Sparks, city of Reno, Washoe County, and the Truckee Meadows Water Authority for the evaluation of the feasibility of using recycled water for irrigation and other permitted uses in Palomino, Palomino Valley, cost of one point six million dollars, with the city of Sparks share being four hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, as stated, Michael Drinkwater, treatment plant manager, I am before you today with an interlocal agreement for your consideration. This one, as the mayor just stated, is for the investigation of a specific site in Palomino Valley for the suitability of its use for uh recycled water application as irrigation water and ultimately as advanced purified water, or what you may have heard of as A-plus water for uh injection for aquifer storage, and then finally, that would then create a water resource which might ultimately be piped back to the um metropolitan area for use by Tumwah. Uh, this agreement is a four-way agreement between the city of Sparks, city of Reno, Washoe County, and the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. All three of the sister agencies have approved the agreement as it is presented before you today. So as I said, what it is, is a hydrogeologic investigation coupled with some other related items to determine the suitability of this site, and uh, can I pull up my uh? Where are we? There we go, all right, so you see this is the project location, you see the metropolitan area of Sparks Pyramid Highway, we're to the east of Pyramid Highway, north of Winemucca Ranch Road. And we'll zoom in a little bit, here's a uh, ugh, sorry about that. Somewhere on here is a uh, a way to, there it is. So there's a a closer view of the area, the area in green is the portion we're discussing. The intent would be to determine its suitability for, uh, as I said, the use of recycled water. What this would allow, the current project, while certainly no project has been, there are no final decisions made at all yet. We envision it taking approximately four million gallons per day of treated effluent at buildout for use as recycled water. We currently in envision this to take two million gallons from Tumwah and two million gallons per day from Stummwah, the South Truckee Meadows Plant uh up there. What that does is divert water away from our river outfall, as you are painfully aware of all of the discharge regulations Tumwah has to meet, the ones to the Truckee River are the most stringent, particularly the total nitrogen and the total dissolved solids, uh, TMDL. Water going to beneficial reuse as such as irrigation water or ultimately for aquifer recharges, A-plus water does not debit against our TMDL allocations. So it allows us to continue to treat and dispose of water appropriately, but not run up against our TMDL limits, potentially. Again, I want to stress, what we're before you today is asking for the funding for the investigation to determine if this is a suitable site. So if it proves to be a suitable site, we would potentially be able to send two million gallons per day from Tumwah, not to the river. What does that mean? Two million gallons per day is approximately fourteen thousand single-family homes, so that's water, that's growth that is anticipated in this region that could be accommodated without not requiring us to build the necessary treatment processes inside the treatment plant for a river discharge. So it it can defer or perhaps replace those inside-the-fence solutions, defer for approximately a decade. And again, you certainly make them smaller, perhaps eliminate the need for them in the future. So that's what it is, that's why we would do it, can we do it? The answer is we don't know, that's why I'm before you asking for the money for this investigation. Uh, recall that, you know, anytime you're into the groundwater regime, there's a lot, you can't see it, and there's a lot of inferred conclusions, not so many uh expressed conclusions. We would use this money to do the necessary hydrogeologic investigations, the studies to determine, uh, not only is there capacity in the aquifer, which we believe there is, uh, as um unlike a site that we studied a couple of years ago, Bedell Flat, you've probably heard us talk about. This particular site has been under irrigation for for approximately forty-five years, so there's a a reasonable expectation that there's a groundwater deficit. That capacity in the aquifer is capacity that we could potentially fill with effluent. The Bedell Flat Project, as you said, that's north of the Cold Springs area, we had a similar, uh, we being the regional effluent management team, thought that might be a suitable site for a similar project a couple of years ago. We did a similar investigation, that did not manifest, it turns out that that is an inappropriate site because the aquifer is completely full, there's no capacity there. So there are surprises when you start doing these investigations, absolutely, which is why we want to do this. We then, we also need to identify certain potential deal killers. There are potential constituents, naturally occurring constituents in the ground, in the soil, that could be mobilized in an injection project, uh, such as arsenic, fluoride, fluorine, nitrate, which actually is not natural, but it's a residual product of the agricultural operation over the last forty-four years or so. We need to know what the fate of those particular constituents would be, would they ultimately be a problem for the drinking water aquifer? Right now, we don't know. We estimate, uh, once begun, this project will take, this investigation will take approximately ten months, and it will result in an in a report that would inform, the final question of this is should we do it? That's a policy question, and if approved today, we will get underway, so give us a little buffer time to get up. Year from now, we would before the, be before the various elected bodies such as yourselves with the conversation of we know what we can do, we know approximately what it will cost to do the Palomino Valley, we also know what it costs at a planning level, we know what treatment at Tumwah costs. We also know what it costs at a planning level. We know what treatment at Tumworth costs. We can do the cost benefit analysis for you and ultimately ask for direction. Is that something that the City of Sparks sees value? And I would point out at this point, once the investigation is done, it could be the City of Sparks and any subset necessarily be all four. Perhaps one of the entities would not see value in it, but the other three would. And so at that point, three of the entities might proceed with, with an actual project. So no decisions have been made at this point. The current interlocal agreement does contemplate splitting the cost of the four ways. As the mayor said in the, announcing the item, it's 1.6 million dollars total, 400,000 dollars per agency. It was divided equally for two reasons. One, we wanted to get it underway. And so we just thought the directors who negotiated this thought it was just makes sense at this point equally. The second is ultimately if something gets built, we cannot at this point predict which entity might, how much relative benefit might accrue to each entity. Perhaps Sparks or Reno or Washoe County disproportionately earns benefit of the ultimate project. And perhaps at that point, certainly those costs would be, but right now, without that information, it just made sense to split the cost evenly four ways. So if approved, Tumwa will be the lead agency. Any subconsultant agreements or contractor agreements will go, and we of course would reimburse them. The city staff would participate in all the meetings, the direction to the contractors, meetings with regulators to discuss potentially what permits might be necessary on the ultimate project and so on. So the City Sparks staff would participate in all of those conversations, as would, you know, represent. And I do need to point out, while there is adequate funding in the sewer fund for this, this was not an anticipated project and therefore there is not a line item in the FY twenty-two CIP. So if approved, again, there is adequate funding in reserves. The finance department would at some, a future meeting, bring forward a budget augmentation to true that up. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? You're going to just have to speak up for me. Thank you. I'm getting some tech assistance here. Mr. Dare?
Thank you, sir. This is something I just want to say for everyone. We all get to serve on a lot of boards. And so myself and Paul and Tumwa, we've, we've been through this and heard it, and it was close to unanimous in the sense of being supported. And I want to just talk about why I like this and responsibility wise, is I think we are definitely looking into the future, trying to find our best answers before we go spend an amazing amount of money on something that if we can save. And, and the other piece of this, can you talk for a moment to the emergency potential water aquifer? I think you mentioned it, but having, with the aquifer, us having another potential resource for emergency water in the future, because I think that's part of our responsibility that we're talking about, potentially. Obviously, we don't know a lot of things. Do you mind talking to that for a second?
No, no, sir. Mr. Dare? At, currently, we envision, our, our friends at the, at the Truckee Meadows Water Authority envision this site might be suitable for a potable water aquifer storage project, an additional underground reservoir for them. We also envision that at some not-too-distant point in the future, we would switch from potable water to, again, the advanced purified water or the A-plus water in order to recharge that aquifer. But that water, once injected, it travels, you know, a defined distance through the aquifer and, and that would be one of the outputs of the study is how far it would have to, how long it would have to be underground. It's now just water. It's not effluent, it's not treated water, it's not wastewater, it's just water. And that water would be available to the Truckee Meadows Water Authority as a new resource for whatever appropriate use they might want to use it for, be it drought reserves or, or whatever.
That's a significant part that I just want to point out to anybody listening out there and the millions of people who watch us on Facebook and, and to us as we make a decision, is that yes, it's an investment, any, every dollar matters, and we don't take that lightly. But when you're playing this game of chess of trying to look ahead three places, we won't be here when we have the biggest problems with water. We won't be on the council anymore because we're okay right now. We'll get through. But in years to come, as we grow and do different things, we must, must be playing that game. And I think this gives us that opportunity to look into something that could be a new unknown. So thank you for bringing it in front of us, and that's all my questions.
Mr. Anderson?
I just want to say, I, this is one of those kind of projects that I think are really exciting. One, to see a region coming together, looking at solutions that, as Councilman Dare said, that are maybe not facing us at this very moment. I guess actually over at your treatment facility, maybe that is closer to the deadline as far as what you're going to have to do. But I, I just think it's so exciting to see that there are options that we can actually take care of two issues in, in one clean sweep. Where potentially we're dealing with the numbers that you're bumping up against on what you can put into the river, plus the fact that potentially we can do something long-term as far as adding potable water to, to our community. And I just want to say I support this. I think this is a fantastic project.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, I, I too, you know, I'm strong supporter of this project. Once again, we're looking at some amazingly innovative solutions to our issue of the water that comes out of our sewer treatment plant into the Truckee River and ultimately into Pyramid Lake. So with all those restrictions, the ability of a variety of things that we have looked at with the, you know, with our effluent and water going out to the Tri Center. This is another option of how we can use that water that's going to help the community. So irrigation or, you know, in the case of the Tri Center, you know, cooling for some of those switch and Tesla and, and the groups out there. So, so the, the use of that water that helps us as well. And I think the number one thing that I really excited about with this project is when you talked about possible 10-year deferral and expansion of our water treatment plant. Because at the end of the day, really, all of our growth that we're experiencing doesn't, isn't limited by water. Everyone thinks that it's water, but it's not. And we all know, because we hear it over and over again from you and from staff, it's, it's sewer treatment. It's our capacity to treat, treat our water as we continue to grow with a sewer treatment plant that's almost as old as I am. So, thank you. I appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Dare, did you have another comment or?
No, no, that's the computer talking.
It's my computer talking. Well, I, I think the thing that we got to point out and the reason why this is a good idea in my mind is the low end of fixing our sewer plant is around 150 million dollars.
A little more, sir.
Up to three, three quarters of a billion dollars.
I'm sorry, I just, I think in total dollars, and I forget, you know, there's another entity that has to pick up a portion of that. So generally for the, our facility plan was around 600 million dollars for the, about a 20 to 30-year look ahead, depending upon growth, you know, when, so, but that's, that's total cost.
So, yeah, the bottom line is water in is not our problem, water out is our issue at this point. So I wholeheartedly support this. With that being said, I'm going to, I'm going to take a public comment. Michael DiMarini? Martini, excuse me. Should have known all the martinis that work here at the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I appreciate this opportunity to sit in this hot seat. I've been here before, not very often, but my experience, I'm Michael DiMartini. I'm a civil engineer, currently licensed civil engineer. I'm a certified water, wastewater treatment operator, a certified water operator, and a licensed water rights surveyor. I worked in one of the big engineering companies in Sparks for almost three decades, designing much of where we live out here today, using up much of the gravel that made the Marina. That being said, I've also served on the Regional Water Planning Commission and the Water Planning Commission of Northern Nevada for 24 years in total. And I made a similar proposal to, for a company I worked for, American Environmental Resources, to take water out into the same area a number of years ago. I think it was back in around 2013 or something. And talked with stakeholders, it just wasn't going to work. It wasn't going to work because of TDS concerns, Pyramid Lake, and the Paiute Tribe, and other public, public entities that were not in, desirous of the idea. But going to this proposal, concerns I have are firstly is the public. Which, this is a 1.6 million dollar study. It's going on top of many millions of dollars of studies that have already been done and paid for by the community towards this end. And it's a good end, and I appreciate the accuracy of Mr. Drinkwater's presentation. I think it was quite good and, and not biased and, and accurate. However, we need to involve the public. There's, there's a lot of money that's been spent. There's a lot of money we're talking about here. And there's a lot of money that comes after this. Part of this proposal even suggests paying 27 million dollars for water rights as a necessary component to implement the project. But there will be a lot more costs. So the issue is, is what does the public want? I think the outreach for the public needs to start sooner than later. I don't think it will cost one and a half million dollars. I don't think the Pyramid Lake Tribe is on, best as I can tell from all the documents, nobody's talked with them. They haven't agreed to participate in the process yet, as I understand. I don't believe, I've talked to a lot of people. I went around personally and talked to 160 individual well owners back a couple of months, a couple of years ago now. They were not aware of this type of project going on that we're talking about here. What we're really talking about here is taking our, treating our effluent to a high degree of quality and storing it in the ground, and then coming back and taking it back out, putting it into our domestic water supply. I think that's something the public needs to hear about, and I can tell you.
I need you to wrap it up for me, sir.
So with that, I'll try to wrap it up quickly. I don't think Sparks should pay 400,000 dollars. I think everybody should look at doing reverse osmosis at the treatment plant. And because we know about, the people know about that, we can get that done. Let's get the reverse osmosis done. It's, we're going to have to do it in, in, anyway. Class A-plus water has high TDS. It's not treated to that level. So it's just going to go into the aquifer and we're going to have to treat it later. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. Looking for a motion, Councilman Dare?
I move to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, Washoe County, and the Truckee Meadows Water Authority for the evaluation of the feasibility of using recycled water for irrigation and other permitted uses in Palomino Valley at a total cost of, it disappeared, but 1,600,000 dollars. And my thing disappeared. But I think this is a motion. Okay, I'll finish it up there. Total cost of 1,600,000 with the City of Sparks, share being 400,000. Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a second. Okay, verbally?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call, can you guys vote?
Yeah, I don't know.
Nope.
Yes.
Now, please vote.
Not my vote. I was saying yes, I can.
All right. Motion carries, passes unanimously. All right, yes.
Can I be so kind or so bold as to ask you for about a 10-minute recess so that we can work on these technical issues and hopefully get past them so that when we come back, we don't continually have these?
Can we do the meeting without the computer for a minute?
We could. We absolutely could.
We'll take 10 and then we'll come back, and if it's not ready, we're going to go on verbally.
We're going to go to the end and we'll take the old passion.
So, all right, so we'll take a 10-minute recess for technical difficulties. Consideration, discussion of possible approval of an agreement AC 5770 with AECOM and City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Expansion Electrical Systems Study and Preliminary Design in the amount of $337,170.00 with Spark's share being $105,770.23. Casey, you're up.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensah and I am the Treatment Plant Process Engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I am here today seeking approval of an agreement between the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, and AECOM. This is to design services on what will effectively be an electrical master plan for the plant. This is following up on the recently completed Tom War facility plan. They identified that we're gonna need some additional electrical infrastructure as the plant grows and gets expanded. And so that facility plan, however, is a really high level view of just how much power are you gonna need and about how much is it gonna cost. This design service will actually help really enhance the resolution of what kinds of electrical, what kind of pacing and phasing that we're gonna be able to incorporate into our five-year CIP and help with our long efforts. Through this effort, they're gonna give us a preliminary design review of about 10% design. They're gonna look at feasibility, amount of power coming in and some of the electrical components that we need. They're gonna update and give us some draft one-line diagram to split power throughout the facility. And we're gonna examine different options, acquiring a new substation, power substation for the plant, where that would be located, and communicate with NV Energy on the feasibility of all this. And then they're gonna provide us a much greater refined estimate, I think, on the cost that we can then incorporate for our future planning. So with that, I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Ms. Byrie.
I'm the agreement, excuse me, AC 5770 with AECOM for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Expansion Electrical System Study and Preliminary Design in the amount of $337,170.00 with Spark's share being $105,770.23. And 23 cents.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. All right, consideration, discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC 5771 with Brown and Caldwell and the City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Nitrification Tower Number One Rehabilitation and Improvements Project in the amount of $316,200. With Spark's share being 99,191.94. Casey, go ahead.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensah. I'm the Treatment Plant Process Engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I am here today seeking agreement for another, or seeking approval of another three-party agreement between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Brown and Caldwell. This is for design services of one of our nitrifying trickling filters. So our nitrifying trickling filters, we have four that were originally constructed, five, and then two more that were subsequently constructed in the early 2000s. This is what does the bulk of the version to help us on the very first step of our nitrogen removal for the plant. These are critical pieces of equipment. For, in 2016, we conducted a evaluation of these nitrifying trickling filters, which indicated that they are almost 35 years old. They're in need of and replacement of a lot of the different parts and constituents. So we began by rehabilitating Nitrification Tower and the construction of that was completed in 2020. And now we're up for the next one. So what's neat about this design contract is that since this is the second, very similar, that this contract is approximately $130,000 cheaper than the design of Nitrification Tower Number One. So I have a photo of what an effort looked like of Nitrification Tower Number Two. So they, this is normally filled 20 feet high media. And then that sits on top of these concrete beams. It's set on top of these concrete pillars. And so all that got completely removed. We demolished this pipe in the center. That's the influence to the process. So we demolished that, rebuilt it, got all new media. We did a lot of concrete coating and repair. So that's what is expected. So again, this contract is for the design services. And I'll be back before you, presumably, next fiscal year to ask for the construction funds.
Presumably. Questions from the council? You're not going anywhere. Nobody else is excited about smudge waste than you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, wait a minute, let me open it to public comment first. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agreement AC 5771 with Brown and Caldwell and the City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and Nitrification and Improvements Project in the amount of $316,200 with Spark's share being $99,191.94.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. All right, consideration, discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC 5771 with Brown and Caldwell and the City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Nitrification Tower Number One Rehabilitation and Improvements Project in the amount of $316,200. With Spark's share being 99,191.94. Casey, go ahead.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensah. I'm the Treatment Plant Process Engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I am here today seeking agreement for another, or seeking approval of another three-party agreement between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Brown and Caldwell. This is for design services of one of our nitrifying trickling filters. So our nitrifying trickling filters, we have four that were originally constructed, five, and then two more that were subsequently constructed in the early 2000s. This is what does the bulk of the version to help us on the very first step of our nitrogen removal for the plant. These are critical pieces of equipment. For, in 2016, we conducted a evaluation of these nitrifying trickling filters, which indicated that they are almost 35 years old. They're in need of and replacement of a lot of the different parts and constituents. So we began by rehabilitating Nitrification Tower and the construction of that was completed in 2020. And now we're up for the next one. So what's neat about this design contract is that since this is the second, very similar, that this contract is approximately $130,000 cheaper than the design of Nitrification Tower Number One. So I have a photo of what an effort looked like of Nitrification Tower Number Two. So they, this is normally filled 20 feet high media. And then that sits on top of these concrete beams. It's set on top of these concrete pillars. And so all that got completely removed. We demolished this pipe in the center. That's the influence to the process. So we demolished that, rebuilt it, got all new media. We did a lot of concrete coating and repair. So that's what is expected. So again, this contract is for the design services. And I'll be back before you, presumably, next fiscal year to ask for the construction funds.
Presumably. Questions from the council? You're not going anywhere. Nobody else is excited about smudge waste than you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, wait a minute, let me open it to public comment first. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agreement AC 5771 with Brown and Caldwell and the City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and Nitrification and Improvements Project in the amount of $316,200 with Spark's share being $99,191.94. And 23 cents.
Looking for a second? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Ms. Vanderwell, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, always a pleasure.
Consideration, 9.6. Consideration, discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC 5775 with Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2021 Portland Cement Concrete Alley's Project. And that's as far as I'm going. In the amount of $317,007. They couldn't have just given us the seven bucks, huh? Amber, you're up, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. As introduced by the mayor, I'm here presenting a construction contract with Sierra Nevada Construction for our FY '21 PCC, Portland Cement Concrete Alley's Project. I can direct you to the map on your screen. For context, you'll see towards the bottom is Glendale Avenue and towards your left is South Rock Boulevard. The two alleys included in this project are highlighted here in red. These are included in the city's pavement management system and they are outlined in our five-year CIP. These existing alley services are currently asphalt. They're extremely deteriorated. And we will be looking to rehabilitate them with concrete to hopefully increase their life expectancy. Through the design process, this alley closer to Glendale, further south, it was found that there was sewer replacement that was needed and that is included in this project. The project currently has 40 working days scheduled. We advertised on May 5th and opened bids on May 19th. We received two qualifying bidders with Sierra Nevada Construction being the low bid at that $317,007. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, no questions? Looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson?
I'll make a motion. And actually, before I do, I just wanna say how exciting it is that we're seeing the engineer's estimate higher than what we're getting the bids for. So that's a nice change of events. But with that being said, I move to approve the construction contract AC 5775 with Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2021 Portland Cement Concrete Alley's Project, bid number 2021017, PWP WA 2021255 in the amount of $317,007.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. All right, consideration, discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC 5771 with Brown and Caldwell and the City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Nitrification Tower Number One Rehabilitation and Improvements Project in the amount of $316,200. With Spark's share being 99,191.94. Casey, go ahead.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensah. I'm the Treatment Plant Process Engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I am here today seeking agreement for another, or seeking approval of another three-party agreement between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Brown and Caldwell. This is for design services of one of our nitrifying trickling filters. So our nitrifying trickling filters, we have four that were originally constructed, five, and then two more that were subsequently constructed in the early 2000s. This is what does the bulk of the version to help us on the very first step of our nitrogen removal for the plant. These are critical pieces of equipment. For, in 2016, we conducted a evaluation of these nitrifying trickling filters, which indicated that they are almost 35 years old. They're in need of and replacement of a lot of the different parts and constituents. So we began by rehabilitating Nitrification Tower and the construction of that was completed in 2020. And now we're up for the next one. So what's neat about this design contract is that since this is the second, very similar, that this contract is approximately $130,000 cheaper than the design of Nitrification Tower Number One. So I have a photo of what an effort looked like of Nitrification Tower Number Two. So they, this is normally filled 20 feet high media. And then that sits on top of these concrete beams. It's set on top of these concrete pillars. And so all that got completely removed. We demolished this pipe in the center. That's the influence to the process. So we demolished that, rebuilt it, got all new media. We did a lot of concrete coating and repair. So that's what is expected. So again, this contract is for the design services. And I'll be back before you, presumably, next fiscal year to ask for the construction funds.
Presumably. Questions from the council? You're not going anywhere. Nobody else is excited about smudge waste than you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, wait a minute, let me open it to public comment first. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agreement AC 5771 with Brown and Caldwell and the City of Reno for engineering and design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and Nitrification and Improvements Project in the amount of $316,200 with Spark's share being $99,191.94.
Looking for a second? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Ms. Vanderwell, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, always a pleasure.
Consideration, 9.6. Consideration, discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC 5775 with Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2021 Portland Cement Concrete Alley's Project. And that's as far as I'm going. In the amount of $317,007. They couldn't have just given us the seven bucks, huh? Amber, you're up, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. As introduced by the mayor, I'm here presenting a construction contract with Sierra Nevada Construction for our FY '21 PCC, Portland Cement Concrete Alley's Project. I can direct you to the map on your screen. For context, you'll see towards the bottom is Glendale Avenue and towards your left is South Rock Boulevard. The two alleys included in this project are highlighted here in red. These are included in the city's pavement management system and they are outlined in our five-year CIP. These existing alley services are currently asphalt. They're extremely deteriorated. And we will be looking to rehabilitate them with concrete to hopefully increase their life expectancy. Through the design process, this alley closer to Glendale, further south, it was found that there was sewer replacement that was needed and that is included in this project. The project currently has 40 working days scheduled. We advertised on May 5th and opened bids on May 19th. We received two qualifying bidders with Sierra Nevada Construction being the low bid at that $317,007. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, no questions? Looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson?
I'll make a motion. And actually, before I do, I just wanna say how exciting it is that we're seeing the engineer's estimate higher than what we're getting the bids for. So that's a nice change of events. But with that being said, I move to approve the construction contract AC 5775 with Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2021 Portland Cement Concrete Alley's Project, bid number 2021017, PWP WA 2021255 in the amount of $317,007.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then I'm gonna open this quickly to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, all right, I'm gonna call for the vote.
The agreement, excuse me, AC five seven seven zero with AECOM for engineering design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Expansion Electrical Systems Study and Preliminary Design in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, with Spark's share being one hundred and five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-three cents.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. All right, consideration discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC five seven seven one with Brown and Caldwell and the city of Reno for engineering design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Nitrification Tower Number One Rehabilitation and Improvements Project in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. With Spark's share being ninety-nine one ninety-one dot ninety-four. Casey, go ahead.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensah. I'm the treatment plant process engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I am here today seeking agreement for another, or seeking approval of another three-party agreement between the city of Sparks, city of Reno and Brown and Caldwell. This is for design services of one of our nitrifying trickling filters. So our nitrifying trickling filters, we have four that were originally constructed, five, and then two more that were subsequently constructed in the early 2000s. This is what does the bulk of the version to help us on the very first step of our nitrogen removal for the plant. These are critical pieces of equipment. For, in 2016, we conducted a evaluation of these nitrifying trickling filters, which indicated that they are almost thirty-five years old. They're in need of and replacement of a lot of the different parts and constituents. So we began by rehabilitating nitrification tower and that construction of that was completed in 2020. And now we're up for the next one. So what's neat about this design contract is that since this is the second, very similar, that this contract is approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars cheaper than the design of nitrification tower number one. So I have a photo of what an effort looked like of nitrification tower number two. So they, this is normally filled twenty feet high media. And then that sits on top of these concrete beams that sit on top of these concrete pillars. And so all that got completely removed. We demolished this pipe in the center that's the influence to the process. So we demolished that, rebuilt it, got all new media, we did a lot of concrete coating and repair. So that's what is expected. So again, this contract is for the design services. And I'll be back before you presumably next fiscal year to ask for the construction funds.
Presumably. Questions from the council? You're not going anywhere. Nobody else is excited about smudge waste than you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, wait a minute, let me open it to public comment first. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agreement AC five seven seven one with Brown and Caldwell and the city of Reno for engineering design services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in Nightfall One Rehabilitation and Improvements Project in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars, with Spark's share being ninety-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
Looking for a second? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Ms. Vanderwell, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, always a pleasure.
Consideration, nine point six, consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC five seven seven five with Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2021 Portland Cement Concrete Alley's project. And that's as far as I'm going, in the amount of three hundred seventeen thousand and seven dollars. They couldn't have just given us the seven bucks, huh? Amber, you're up, thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. As introduced by the mayor, I'm here presenting a construction contract with Sierra Nevada Construction for our FY twenty-one PCC Portland Cement Concrete Alley's project. I can direct you to the map on your screen. For context, you'll see towards the bottom is Glendale Avenue and towards your left is South Rock Boulevard. The two alleys included in this project are highlighted here in red. These are included in the city's pavement management system and they are outlined in our five-year CIP. These existing alley services are currently asphalt, they're extremely deteriorated, and we will be looking to rehabilitate them with concrete to hopefully increase their life expectancy. Through the design process, this alley closer to Glendale, further south, it was found that there was sewer replacement that was needed and that is included in this project. The project currently has forty working days scheduled. We advertised on May fifth and opened bids on May nineteenth. We received two qualifying bidders with Sierra Nevada Construction being the low bid at that three hundred and seventeen thousand and seven dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, no questions? Looking for a motion, Mr. Anderson.
I'll make a motion, and actually before I do, I just want to say how exciting it is that we're seeing the engineer's estimate higher than what we're getting the bids for. So that's a nice change of events. But with that being said, I move to approve the construction contract AC five seven seven five with Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2021 Portland Cement Concrete Alley's project. Bid number twenty twenty-one zero one seven, PWP WA twenty twenty-one two fifty-five in the amount of three hundred seventeen thousand seven dollars.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then I'm going to open this quickly to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, all right, I'm going to call for the vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Amber. Nine point seven, consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC five seven 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 with West Coast paving for the 2021 Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project, G Street and Shriver Boulevard in the amount of seven hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. Amber.
Good afternoon, mayor. Again, I'm city council members, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This is another construction contract, this one is with West Coast Paving, and it is for our FY twenty-one Drainage and Roadway Project, specifically G Street and Shriver Boulevard. If I can again direct you to the map on your screen, the streets highlighted in red are what are included on this project. For orientation, you'll see Prater Way just to the bottom or to the south, and the project is bordered by Fourth Street and First Street to the east and west. The streets included on this are G Street and Shriver Boulevard. This is included in the city's five-year CIP and it represents a coordination between the utility division and the roadway division. For these streets, the existing curb and gutter is so deteriorated at this point that it's having issues moving stormwater runoff off of the road. Because the curb and gutter is entirely replaced with this project, we also replaced the sidewalk, which is immediately adjacent to that curb and gutter. And instead of providing just a narrow patch on the street, due to its deteriorated condition, we redo the entire street section. The project currently has thirty-five working days on the calendar. It was advertised April fourteenth, bids were open April twenty-eighth. We received three qualifying bidders with West Coast Paving being the low bidder at seven hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Abbott?
I'm motioned through the construction contract AC dash five seven 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 with the West Coast Paving for the 2021 Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project, G Street and Shriver Boulevard, bid number twenty slash twenty-one dash oh zero one six, PWP WA twenty twenty-one two fifty-four, in the amount of seven hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Looking for a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, nine point eight. Consideration discussion of possible approval of an interlocal agreement AC five seven seven eight with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for the Signal Timing Six Phase Two Project. Amber.
Good afternoon, one more time, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This is an interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Sparks and the Regional Transportation Commission, the RTC, representing the Signal Timing Six Phase Two Project. So this is the next in a series of signal retiming projects throughout the region that aim to alleviate travel time delay and increase capacity on our regional roads through efficient use of traffic signal timing. This is an annual agreement that comes before you with similar agreement for Reno and Washoe County. Through this agreement, the RTC will reimburse the city of Sparks for staff time spent working with RTC on implementing new signal timing, city's central transportation traffic system. This agreement is for up to twenty-five thousand dollars of reimbursement. And again, staff time and any eligible project costs are available up to that amount. Through the last year, we've seen improvements to the Rock Boulevard Corridor, specifically from Prater to Greg. We've seen improvements along El Ran, we've worked for improvements on Sparks Boulevard, specifically in the Legends Development Area to address big special events such as Black Friday. With this year, one of the corridors that are scheduled to be looked at is the Pyramid from I-80 to Wingfield Hills. And other areas will be developed as new complaints come in and as we observe new growth and different traffic patterns throughout the region. With that, I'm happy.
Questions from the council, Ms. Bybee.
Yeah, Amber, so you said this year's signal timing will look primarily at the Pyramid Corridor and any other complaints or areas of concern, but it's predominantly Pyramid Corridor?
Just starts with Pyramid Corridor, that's the only one identified at this time. And as we see new growth or change in traffic patterns, we can adjust that accordingly.
Okay, and do you work with NDOT them? Because that's an NDOT road.
It is owned by NDOT, but through our master signal agreement, we operate and maintain the traffic signals.
Okay.
Which includes the timing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Let me ask the public, is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement AC dash five seven seven eight with the Regional Transportation Commission for Signal Timing Six Phase Two Project.
Looking for a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Second from Ms. Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Amber.
Thank you.
Nine point nine, consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC five seven seven four with Sierra Nevada Construction for the North Truckee Ditch Rehabilitation Project and in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand and seven dollars. Seven's our lucky number today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Kevin Porter, Utility Manager. And that is the way that you can tell that SNC won the bid if it ends in seven dollars. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this is a construction contract, and this is for storm drain improvements on a section of the North Truckee Ditch, not to be confused with the North Truckee Drain. The North Truckee Ditch was historically an irrigation ditch that ran through town. And as development occurred throughout Sparks, it was slowly converted to a storm drain system. What you're seeing here on the computer, I'll make this full screen, of the ditch, it was brought to the city's attention that needed some rehabilitation and some work. For context, this exhibit, kind of a brain teaser, the North Arrow is actually oriented to the right of the image. This is Pyramid Highway. And just off-screen to the right is Green Bray Drive. The donut shop would be on the right side, and then up in the top-left corner would be Shelley Park. The property that we're looking at here is the new Covenant Church property, just on the west side of Pyramid Highway. And that old irrigation ditch that's now a storm drain system runs right through their parking lot. City-owned facility, as I mentioned, brought to our attention that was in disrepair. Because it was an irrigation ditch converted to a storm drain system, it's very shallow, sitting right underneath the paving, their parking lot. The property owner brought to our attention that this pipe is now coming through, daylighting through their parking lot. And in fact, because the traffic has, parked cars have kind of hit the top of that pipe over and over, there's some voids and some holes through the pipe into that forty-eight-inch storm drain pipe. So this construction contract will go through and make improvements to that system to strengthen it and correct where some of the deficiencies are. In addition to that, the amount also includes two reimbursable items that I will discuss subsequently if this item is approved, for some work to be done with NDOT and the property owner itself. Of that two hundred ninety-six thousand and seven dollars, the city's work comes out to approximately a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And then those two reimbursable items make up the difference. We had nine bids with this project. SNC's bid was the lowest, and this was approved in the fiscal year twenty-one CIP. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Vanderwell?
Move to approve the construction contract AC dash five seven seven four with Sierra Nevada Construction for the North Truckee Ditch Rehabilitation Project in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand and seven dollars.
For a second? Second by Mr. Abbott? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Okay, moving on, nine point ten. Consideration discussion and possible approval of a reimbursement agreement AC five seven seven six with New Covenant Church located at thirteen twenty-seven Pyramid Way for additional asphalt parking lot reconstruction associated with the North Truckee Ditch Rehabilitation Project in the amount of sixty-nine thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Kevin Porter, Utility Manager, for the record. And as I mentioned, this item and the following item are related to the construction contract. Once again, you'll notice the same exhibit, but a different outline. This outlines the parking lot associated with the church. What you'll notice in the middle of this exhibit is the "not apart", and that just mirrors that storm drain section. And so what this reimbursement agreement is for is for the church, the property owner, to reimburse the city in the amount of approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars for the reconstruction of this parking lot outside of those city limits of what I just discussed in the previous item. And that amount was determined just based off the proportionate share of the square footage of the parking lot based on the bid items we received from the Sierra Nevada Construction low bid for the paving-specific bid items. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this item.
Questions from the council? All right, seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, bring it back, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare? Ms. Vanderwell? Donald? Ms. Donald? Councilman's son?
Council. Oh, I move to approve the reimbursement agreement AC dash five seven seven six with the New Covenant Church located at thirteen twenty-seven Pyramid Way for additional asphalt parking lot reconstruction associated with the North Truckee Ditch Rehabilitation Project in the amount of sixty-nine thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, nine point one one, we're hitting our stride now, Neil. Computer's not slowing us down. Consideration discussion and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement AC five seven seven three with Nevada Department of Transportation for reconstruction of curb gutter and asphalt paving associated with the North Truckee Ditch Rehabilitation Project for reimbursement of those costs with the city of Sparks in the estimated amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Kevin Porter, for the record. And same exhibit here, you'll see this when you close your eyes, I'm sure, the rest of the afternoon. What we're looking at here, this small red rectangular area is the NDOT right-of-way just off of the roadway, off of Pyramid Highway, that is adjacent to the work that I've discussed in the previous two items. Surprisingly enough, this stretch of road, just this stretch specifically right in front of this property has probably the worst curb and gutter for that stretch of Pyramid Highway from McCarran South to I-80. We approached NDOT and let them know we would be doing some work in the area and they were agreeable to do an interlocal agreement to allow the same contractor to replace that curb and gutter that's deteriorated along with two driveway approaches and some asphalt paving that falls within their right-of-way. The interlocal agreement's on the order not to exceed a fifty-nine thousand dollars based on the bid items we received from the Sierra Nevada Construction bid. Their work will come out to be on the order of thirty-five thousand dollars. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question from the council? All right, seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Love.
Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement AC dash five seven seven three with the Nevada Department of Transportation for reconstruction of curb gutter and asphalt paving associated with the North Truckee Ditch Rehabilitation Project and reimbursement of those costs to the city of Sparks in the estimated amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Looking for a second? Second by Mr. Anderson?
I'll second that, yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, nine point one two, consideration discussion of possible approval of the First Amendment to the Truckee River Flood Management Authority Interlocal Cooperative Agreement A three eight six four to amend section three point zero five B to provide for a simple majority voting structure rather than the current requirement that all approvals by the Truckee River Flood Management Board of Directors be by unanimous consent. Kevin, you or Michael is going to take this one?
I'll do the introduction and then we'll both be available for questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Kevin Porter, Utility Manager. And as you mentioned, this is an amendment to the existing interlocal cooperative agreement with the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, TERFMA. And essentially, it changes the voting structure for that board. Traditionally, it was a unanimous voting structure for the board members present at that meeting, and this amendment changes it to a simple majority. And along with the simple majority, there are certain items that require the governing bodies to approve, such as we're doing now, an amendment to the interlocal, among other things. We do have general counsel for the Flood Management Authority, Michael Wols, with us today. And between Michael and myself, we'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have towards this item.
Questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
I just want to make sure I understand the benefits. I mean, I get the idea that it probably would function more like a board meeting we're used to in the sense of being able to vote and kind of can get a quorum and those things. But it also protected us in some ways, I think, from what I've heard, in the sense that if something seemed to go in down a path that was not beneficial to Sparks, there's a lot of boards we serve on where we have less people on it and things like that. Can you just explain how that would work out? I say this, we're obviously looking at a flood large, but we're at the bottom of the runoff. And so for me, I think in Sparks, it's very crucial that our voice is heard very large and that we actually have as much benefit out of this as can.
Yes, Michael Wols, for the record, general counsel for the Truckee River Flood Management Authority. You're correct about the benefits and the problems with that. The flip side of having the unanimous vote is it was possible for a single vote to basically gridlock the board, which did happen on one occasion. The discussions about changing this voting structure go all the way back to March of 2012. In discussions about the approval of these proposed changes, some of those same concerns were raised. One of the ways that this is structured to try to help avoid that is with some, I would call, significant board action. It requires a vote from at least one member of each member government. That would include things, well, like the infrastructure plan itself. Actually, I'll just read you the list. If there's any revision or adoption of fees proposed, if they enter into any financing agreements or debt instruments, amendments to the infrastructure tax plan, and adopting and amending the bylaws of the authority and regulations or resolutions or policy statements of at least one member from each governmental entity. So no one can get, one governmental entity can't get locked out on those. For its regular business, it's just going to be a simple affirmative vote of a majority of the board members.
Can we see if RTC can do that? I'm just kidding, that's a joke. I actually love that, actually. That actually is a very good way to protect what happens, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's awesome.
A lot of thought went into this at the Flood Management Board.
Yeah, that actually is a good balance to it, to make sure, that's the concern.
Any other questions from the council? And personally, this is long overdue in my mind. It's, we need to get a flood project done, and this will help us move that along more incrementally quicker than trying to get everybody to agree all in the same day about everything on the agenda. We can take smaller bits of it and make it happen faster. So number one, I want to congratulate the board members on the TERFMA for doing it. This is a bold step in changing the way that this started off. And to change this took a lot of political willpower, so I got to commend them for doing that. Now, all we have to do is the right thing. So I'm looking for a motion. Oh, wait, let me ask first, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak about this item? Seeing none, all right, now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the First Amendment to the Truckee River Flood Management Authority Interlocal Cooperative Agreement.
Okay, looking for a second? Mr. Anderson, second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. It's a big first step here, folks. All right, nine point, whoop, I already did one, two. Nine thirteen, right? Consideration discussion, possible approval of Resolution three three eight zero and a lease agreement AC five seven seven nine with Washoe County School District for the city-owned parcel located north of Clappy Lane. And I'm not going to read you the APN, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Kevin Porter, for the record. This is a lease agreement with the Washoe County School District for a city-owned parcel. And you can see on the exhibit here, the parcel that we're talking about is outlined in the red rectangular polygon, rectangle, I'll say. This is located just south of Interstate eighty and just north of Clappy Lane. If you can notice in the center of that image, those are actually school buses parked at the Washoe County School District Bus Yard. For further context, out of the image in the top-left corner would be Sparks Boulevard Interchange and the Wild Waters Park. This parcel was traditionally open ditch, part of the North Truckee Drain. Back in 2016, when we completed the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project, this This piece of the open ditch, as well as the remainder of the open ditch below I-80, was boxed into a concrete box culvert below ground. And the parcel essentially became usable at that point. As you can see, the access is, um, there is no direct access from Klepey Lane. It's from either parcel adjacent to this parcel. And the size of it does not necessarily make it, uh, desirable, uh, for, for immediate city use. The school district approached us and asked if they, if we'd be willing to entertain a lease. And, uh, staff considered it and determined that, uh, this would be beneficial to the city because as it stands now, without the lease, our Public Works Maintenance crews are responsible for the ongoing routine maintenance of the site for the daily cleanup or the, the ongoing cleanup as, as well as, uh, homeless activity monitoring. And with that lease agreement, that responsibility would now fall on the school district for the remainder of the time that they, that they lease the property from us. The yellow hashed outline inside of that red anticipated area that the school district would actually use for additional school bus parking, but they'll still be responsible for the maintenance across the entire parcel. The, uh, term of the agreement is an initial ten-year term and there's an option for, uh, if both parties are agreeable to renew for an additional ten years beyond that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, question from the council. Mr. Anderson?
I wanna thank staff for taking a look at this. Um, this is, again, one of those perfect examples of how we should be working together in the community. It's of great benefit to the school district. I mean, like that, uh, area to the east of them, um, they had to expand to fit buses. This'll give them some more space. And then the benefit for us is we don't have to worry about maintaining that little island of land over there. So I just wanna say thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Um, I'm not seeing a fiscal analysis, like what, uh, income we'll generate from this lease. Do we have that determined yet?
Uh, we do. The lease agreement spells out the, um, the amount. It's one dollar per year. It was determined just based on the beneficial, the beneficial use of us not having to maintain the property.
Okay. And that makes sense because then we've saved the money of our maintenance of that. So obviously, that's a benefit fiscally to the city. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none? Open it up to the public for comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I move to adopt Resolution thirty-three eighty and approve the lease agreement AC five seven seven nine with Washoe County School District for the city-owned parcel located north of Klepey Lane, APN zero three four one six four zero three.
All right, looking for a second?
I'll go ahead and second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second from Ms. Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. All right, item nine point one four. Consideration discussion possible adoption of Resolution number three three eight two authorizing, authorizing the transfer of the gaming license held by Northern Nevada Restaurant Services, DBA Points Casino Number one thirty to a new location at one four one two Pullman Drive in Sparks, Nevada. Brendan?
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Rest of the council. Brandon Sendal is, uh, Senior Assistant, uh, Senior Assistant City Attorney. This is a companion item with item eight point three from the consent agenda that you already approved. The reason it was divided up into two separate items is it's basically a wrinkle in state law because in order to move a gaming location to another location or a gaming operation to a different location, the local government has to give its sign-off before the applicant can go before the State Gaming Control Board. Creates a chicken and an egg situation under the, under the statute. So just to give you a little context, it's, uh, NRS four six allows the State Gaming Control Board to approve a transfer of a location to a different, uh, to a different, uh, location as long as that new location is within, uh, a rede, in this case, it's Redevelopment District two C over at, uh, the Legends Facility. But the same statute states that the governing, or the gaming not approve it unless the applicant has received all of the, uh, necessary approvals from the local jurisdiction, that being you. So the applicant here, Northern Nevada Restaurant Services, they've operated several gaming locations throughout the city. The one that we're dealing with here is Dottie's over at one 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 four Victorian. The applicant's worked with staff years now between, uh, planning, business licensing, police, legal, how to facilitate this transfer. And they ultimately identified the property at fourteen twelve Pullman Drive, which is within the Redevelopment District. So in recent months, they have received a conditional use permit for the new location. They've received, uh, a building permit. It's actually, um, right now. So the, the resolution that's before you is intended to help the state approvals with the, the Nevada Gaming Control Board to demonstrate that they've met, it's under subsection three of four sixty-three three oh two that requires them to have all local approvals before they go before, uh, this. So just to go through everything, they've submitted all the required materials for their business license application. That was under item eight point three. They've obtained, uh, a, a, a building permit and a conditional use permit for the new location. Um, you know, subject to a, a final certificate of occupancy and other, you know, county and, and state approvals before they can actually start operations. The, the resolution is essentially the city resolution that, that they've met all of their local requirements. And that's it. I can answer any questions.
From the council?
And actually, and, uh, Sev Carl, the applicant is also here if there's any questions.
Mr. Dare?
I just have one quick question. So, let's say this passes and we move forward. Where they're at now, another, another gaming camp moving there without a gaming license into the old Dottie's on Victorian, correct?
That's correct.
So that, that, in the future, it would be old, so that, with different licensing potential.
Exactly. Each, each gaming license is specific to its location. So just because there was a gaming operation in there previously doesn't mean one could.
I thought I knew that, but I wanted to confirm it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, not? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to adopt Resolution number three three eight two authorizing the transfer of gaming license held by Northern Nevada Restaurant Services Incorporated, DBA Points Casino Number one thirty to a new location at fourteen twelve Pullman Drive in Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Segue by Mr. Dare? Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, thanks, Brendan. Nine point one five. Consideration discussion of possible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the city in the amount of approximately one million forty thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars for the next policy periods and authorize the city manager to execute the policy documents. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Dan Maron, your contracts and risk manager for the record. Uh, the next two items in your general business agenda represent the annual renewal of the insurance policies that cover events that may occur outside or beyond the city's self-insurance limits. Um, starting with nine point one five, it's insurance policy specific to the city, which include, um, coverage for property and contents, our automotive physical damage, our general liability, auto liability, cyber liability, employee dishonesty and tenant user liability policies. It's a, it's a raft of different things all put together in a spreadsheet that we offered to you, uh, the table attached to your staff report. Um, the table, um, that was used as the attachment was drafted on May twenty-seventh, two weeks ago. And, uh, the reason I say that is because I'll have some good news in a minute. Represented on the table cumulatively across all the policies, we were seeing an increase of twenty-nine percent or two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and change in premium cost year to year spread between our various coverage with the heaviest impact seen in our policy for property coverage at forty-five percent. The good news is, is that was two weeks ago and we received updates not once but twice today, um, the latest being at two thirty because the brokers behind us do a heck of a job and continually trying to push our carriers for better and better numbers. The line for our property coverage has decreased since your staff report was, um, drafted to a total of five hundred and forty-one thousand or three hundred and seventy dollars resulting in a revised twenty-nine percent increase. So yes, I'm celebrating a twenty-nine percent insurance increase because it was forty-five just a day ago. This and other adjustments makes the total insurance premium for the city, um, policies a total of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars or an increase across all policies of twenty percent. Okay, again, to remind you on the, the document that you have in front of you, we were twenty-nine percent across all policy. So, um, why are we seeing increases? Well, they're due to a combination of things, including, um, first off, the city's claim history. We do have a claim history and as I've shared with you in past meetings, it tends to be that when we break things, being a city government, they tend to be expensive things, whether they're police cars, street sweepers or the like. And so, um, we do have a loss ratio when compared to our premium that we pay for property coverage exceeding twenty percent, which is a healthy number when it comes to insurance, not as bad as others, but still something to be considered when you're looking at rate increases. Um, second, uh, the insured values on everything we own go up as inflationary factors go up. The cost to rebuild buildings and replace equipment also goes up. And so when we go through our renewal process every year, we provide what's called a property schedule and it's just a glorified spreadsheet of everything that we own that we're declaring, hey, we own this, this is how much it's going to cost us to replace it if we break it, how much are you gonna charge against that total dollar figure to insure it? And so year to year, again, prices are going up, so our premiums naturally go up. Finally, it's worth pointing out to you as properly individual property owners that the insurance market is going through an adjustment themselves. Uh, this year, we're continuing to see pricing adjustments due to tremendous losses across the country due to natural disasters, unnatural disasters, all sorts of things where the insurance industry is paying out losses that are just huge. Um, it was reported by AM Best that insurers have seen their losses and expenses as a proportion of premiums hit more than ninety-nine percent. So out of all the premiums paid in the U.S., they're paying more than ninety-nine percent out in losses. And so they're looking to recoup that somewhere and we're a good customer for that. Anecdotally, within the risk management circles of public agencies, we all share information and we ask others, others what's going on. And as we've all hit renewals, generally at the same time, we're all asking the question, geez, how bad is it where you're at? And we're seeing increases in other public agencies as high as fifty percent in property. It's not just us. So in addition to the significant jump in premium costs, the city's also been presented with a situation where we're gonna have a higher self-insured retention or deductible in some cases. The most typical case and the easiest, easiest one to explain is when we damage vehicles. When you have your own personal property, your, your own vehicle insurance, you set a deductible with your insurer. Okay, I wanna pay five hundred dollars every time I get into a crash. We have a similar self-insured retention, they call them different things because it's government, um, for the city. With respect to vehicles up to this point, um, the city covered the first ten thousand dollars in vehicle expense when we had a crash or totaled a car or something along that line. Those deductibles are going up depending on the value of the car. Um, it's starting at twenty-five thousand dollars per case and going as high as seventy-five thousand dollars depending on how much the replacement cost on that vehicle is. So if we were to unfortunately say total a fire truck, we'd be on the hook for the first seventy-five thousand dollars because of the expense of replacing that vehicle. We didn't negotiate this change. This was presented to us by our insurer saying, if you wanna be insured, this is how it's gonna go. So we are looking at premium increases and we're looking at deductible increases, that again, I'm celebrating the fact that it's only twenty-nine percent today instead of forty-five percent, which is an odd position to be in. So with that, I'm pleased to try to answer any questions you may specifically have, may have. Additionally, we've got representatives from our broker, uh, both Brandon Lewis and Jennifer Fire from USI Insurance, um, are available to help you if you have any further questions, but that's the presentation under nine point one five.
All right, questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Dan, are we seeing increases in the cyber liability with everything? Or will that be coming later?
Cyber is built into the, the raft of policies that we had there. Unfortunately, cyber as a component piece of those numbers is only a few thousand dollars to the city. Yes, we are seeing increases in cyber insurance coverage rates in, you know, the hundreds of percentage points, but in terms of real dollars to the city, it's not significant enough for us to pull out and say, hey, here it is. Those markets are adjusting too to what's happening in the world. So you're seeing higher premiums. You're seeing lower levels of coverage. But we think we're okay right now, you know, and, and we, we try and do some analysis with the help of our brokers and the markets that are out there. Yes, we are seeing increases, but not enough for me to bring to your attention today.
Okay. And we're probably looking for cybersecurity, looking more at our IT department and what our cybersecurity systems are right now as more so than maybe what we're looking at in premiums as part of our liability with the insurance.
Part of the application process that we go through each spring is a very lengthy questionnaire on what our, what our practices are in the IT section. Um, things dealing with backup and security and physical security, uh, backup security, who we use, whether it's third party, the authentication's required to access systems. It's, it's a very lengthy application. So they look at real world, what it is we're, we're doing and pricing accordingly.
Right, question, Mr. Anderson?
So I do have a question in regard to, obviously, if there's a natural disaster across the country from us that we, we can't have anything that's gonna, that we can do to impact the effects of our insurance going up on that. However, there are some that we can. Um, like you, you mentioned, um, the, the city risk committee, um, working, working with different departments, trying to diagnose and, and see risks hopefully before they take place. Could you, I mean, a million dollars is, is a significant amount of money for, for one year of insurance. And can you just tell us a little bit about what do you guys look at? How do you, how do you focus on risks and likewise, what can you do to prevent them?
Well, the, the risk committee as it exists generally focuses on more the general liability side of the equation. That is, people are bringing claims to the city because of a trip and fall somewhere that they believe the city's at fault for. Or it's stemming from a lawsuit having to do with actions of one department or another. Things that, that you may see as excessive force claims from the police department or, um, you know, vehicles bumping into each other in the course of action, you know? And strangely enough, we've got cases where, um, you know, city vehicles may, I, I'm working one right now. Where, where REMS a backed one of their ambulances into one of our fire trucks. And we're dealing with the expenses having to do with that. And so, yes, you, you try and, and reach back through those departments and say, well, maybe you think about parking a little bit better. But a lot of it frankly is out of our control. Um, you know, you, you encourage the correct policies from, say, the police department. And the police department frankly is where you see a lot of the claims, especially for vehicle damage because if they are chasing after a bad guy, they're going at, at, you know, significant speeds and they're at risk for bumping into more things or, or, or the bad guy bumping into them. And so that, that's where you're seeing a lot of the expense when it comes to property. Um, you'll notice our general liability policies went up about nine, ten percent, which is at, you know, typical of the industry these days. And given our potential claim history there, uh, I'm happy with that number.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
Is there any, is the conversation just over even about the deductible? That just seems, that's, that's probably where you got me. I get that things go up and when you said that, why? Cause then, like, I mean, even on the low end, you said twenty-five thousand, so.
Correct. And frankly, we, we pushed back. My brokers would tell you that was a nasty phone call that I gave them because the deductible on police cars as they're proposing is gonna be fifty thousand dollars. And I said, well, geez, for fifty thousand dollars, I can practically buy a new police car. And, and so that becomes part of the, the discussion we have internally on whether or not we want to continue to insure the fleet at a replacement cost level or a depreciated cost level. We're paying for it one way or the other. And after I had that initial reaction with respect to a police car, at the moment, a fully outfitted license iron stickers and everything police car is about sixty-five thousand dollars. And so at the moment, it still makes sense to insure them the way that we are. But if it continues to trend this way, I suspect that those in risk management in the future will look at that a little bit harder and, and try and come up with a better balance.
But my question, I mean, we have other areas where we self-insure ourselves for things and put money away for those reasons. And I would almost say that it might be wise to peel off some of our, well, I'm not on your guys' risk thing. I'm sure that's what they're looking at, so I'm not trying to do your job. But I, but I question, that seems, that seems too high.
It, it's, I, I would, I would suggest that it's less of a discussion for the risk committee and it's more of a budgetary looking forward whether or not we wanna use the risk fund in this manner or look at budgeting for replacements in a different way in the future.
Thank you. But you suggest, in what you've seen, it's suggested right now, you guys are saying to.
We don't have a lot of choice. The, the only other choice we have is to look at a depreciated value model for insuring. So for instance, again, looking at the personal insurance that you may have. When you negotiate with your insurance company for a total loss, if you, you know, God forbid, crash your car and, and the insurance company comes to you and says, well, geez, it's five years old, yeah, we'll pay you five grand. And you're looking at a loan that still has ten or fifteen on it and, and you're going, well, what do I do here? We don't have a loan to deal with, but in our insurance model to date, we try and ensure the total replacement cost on all of our vehicles. the total replacement cost on all of our vehicles. Because negotiating the depreciated cost is always a good time with insurance adjusters because you can, it's harder to come up with a value that you both respect and can work with. And then, again, the city's paying for that, but the difference between the depreciated value and what's it going to cost to buy a brand new car, you know? Like I said, you're paying for it one way or the other. And at this point, it's a little bit more predictable and easier to manage our insurance companies. Rather than becoming an adversary, we can just say, well, this is what it costs. Please pay me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I thought Brandon was going to make it.
I move to approve purchasing various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the city in an amount of approximately $1,046,462 for the next policy periods and authorize the city manager to execute policy documents.
Okay, looking for a second. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Got a motion to second any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, 9.16, consideration discussion possible approval to approve to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of $527,947 for next policy periods and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements for those policies. Mr. Maron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Maron, your contracts and risk manager for the record. This item looks a lot like the previous item in that it's for insurance policies. However, this is specific to the property and contents policy that covers the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility or TUMORF. Like the city covers detailed in the previous item, the rate used to calculate this premium has gone up for the next renewal period. Even though we've had no claims at TUMORF in any human, with respect to this policy, we were originally quoted an increase of 45% as it shows on your spreadsheet, year to year. We continue to work to get this amount reduced, and given our clean claim history, the brokers even went out and rebid this with other carriers or attempted to, I should say. We went out to 10 different carriers, only three, including our incumbent, even offered bids. It's that tight of an industry out there, and the other two bids actually did come in higher than what I'm presenting to you today. So the relative good news today is, again, that in the last 24 hours, premium costs have decreased slightly since your staff report was drafted. So the line for property coverage decreased from the original amount of $527,947 down to $448,196, resulting in a revised increase of only 23% for that line over fiscal '21. The second insurance policy that we carry at TUMORF, which is also shown on your sheet, is specific to pollution liability, but we renewed that on a three-year cycle, and this is not one of those years, so that's only there for informational purposes. I'm not asking you to approve anything there. We're not looking for any cover changes with respect to this policy. Again, I'm pleased to try to answer questions, and our brokers are here as well to assist.
Dan gets a gold star for saving 100 grand. Ms. Bybee.
So Dan, is the motion on what you're asking for today, the $527,000 or $448?
I'm asking for the full amount just because, as is obvious by my presentation, these things are floating around. We're going to try and lock this in as best we can, as soon as we can, but I don't want us locked into the lower amount if something changes tomorrow, we discover something that we missed. That's also why your staff report is phrased as approximately, because we've done that in the past where we used a not-to-exceed amount and painted ourselves into a weird corner. And so we ask for the higher amount. Know that we will only encumber what is required in the lowest possible amount that we can get on the day that we sign the policy documents.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Dare.
Just because we're having these fun conversations, can you talk to me about the, what would be the amount of somewhere to happen? What's our deductible here?
Well, this is different because we don't insure vehicles separately at TUMORF, so we're only talking buildings and contents, and it depends on the event that's occurring. For instance, the deductible for an earthquake is different than a fire and depends on the structure or equipment that we're talking about. And so it's a range. You know, earthquake coverage tends to be a percentage of the declared value on the property. And, you know, I've had discussions with Mr. Drinkwater oftentimes because we look at the total value insured and go, well, gosh, it might cost us more to replace the entire plant than what the insured value shows. My answer typically is, well, if we lose everything all at once, we've got different problems. So we're hoping that, you know, any claims out there for a small portion, a building here or there if it were ever to happen.
Have we seen an increase, though? Like, same kind of increases across the board on these as well?
We are, like I said, we were hopeful, given the fact that there was no claim history on the property policy there, that we might be better off. Like I said, we were seeing others in the mid-40s, and we're landing at 23 at the moment.
It sounds weird to say that's good, but...
Yes, exactly.
Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, anyone in the public wishing to make a comment on this? None? Bring it back, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the purchase of various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in an amount of approximately $527,947 for the next policy periods and authorize the city manager to execute agreements for those policies.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Most carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. Thanks for your hard work for us. For the citizens, that's a lot of savings for us. 9.17, consideration discussion and the possible approval to purchase stop-loss insurance from Voya Financial for the city's self-insured group health plan for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $538,947 and authorize the city manager to execute policy documents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, city council members. For the record, Jen McCall, Human Resources Analyst Senior. This agenda item is to approve the purchase of stop-loss insurance for the City of Sparks Group Health Plan for fiscal year '22 and to authorize the city manager to execute our policy documents. What is stop-loss insurance? Why do we need stop-loss insurance? The city's health plan is a self-insured policy, which means that we pay all medical, dental, pharmacy, and vision claims every fiscal year. The risk to a self-funded insurance program is our large catastrophic claims. In the last three years, the city has experienced five large catastrophic claims. Stop-loss insurance has saved us $1.8 million. Stop-loss coverage will make the payments on a claim when the cost exceeds a specific threshold, and we refer to that as a stop-loss deductible. Our current stop-loss deductible is $325,000. In addition to the stop-loss deductible, the city pays an annual premium, which is currently $472,000. A stop-loss carrier may also identify current or large anticipated claims moving into the next fiscal year, and they'll call those claims lasered claims, which will have their own set of deductibles. In order for the city to purchase this protection each year, we work with our broker, LP Insurance, and city staff. This year, we solicited bids from 14 companies with only one company returning a bid. That's our current company, Voya Financial. And within that offer, they presented three different options, which I'd like to share with you. The first option, we call it Voya Option Number One. It would increase our premium by 14%, which is an increase of $66,136. And we would keep our stop, specific stop-loss deductible at $325,000. Voya Option Number Two would only increase the premium by 0.8%. However, it would require us to increase our specific stop-loss deductible for catastrophic claims to $350,000. And finally, Option Number Three, Voy's Option Number Three, it would give us a decrease in our premium, but it would require us to increase our specific stop-loss deductible to $375,000. Built into each one of these options are two lasers. These two lasers are carried over from last year and will continue for us. The first laser has a specific stop-loss deductible of $600,000. The second laser has a amount to it that's for the total anticipated claim of $1.4 million. Therefore, if both of these claims come to full fruition, we'll be spending $2 million on the lasers. Looking at the three options, Option Two, Option Three, they look more attractive, they might save us money on the premiums, but if the city experiences even one catastrophic claim this fiscal year, it does wipe out more than one, it would wipe out the savings we see in the premium. Due to, and we've had just ridiculous rise to the pharmacy costs and the potential for plan increases due to COVID-19, staff is looking towards a more conservative approach this year by selecting Voya Option Number One, and this option is 6% under the annual 20% that is budgeted for this coverage. Therefore, staff asks the city council to approve the purchase of stop-loss insurance by selecting Voya Financial Option Number One and for the city council to approve the city manager to execute plan documents.
Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Now, keep in mind, we're not going to do this at the next meeting, asking for public comment, since I started this way, I have to finish this way. All right, well, with that then, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve the purchase of stop-loss insurance from Voya Financial, Option Number One, for the city's self-funded group health plan program for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $538,947 and authorize the city manager to execute policy documents.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Second for Ms. Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, item 9...
Your last name, council?
Thank you, Jen, we appreciate it. 9.18, consideration discussion possible approval to purchase one-year excess insurance policy for the city's self-funded workers' compensation program for fiscal year 2022 for Safety National in the estimated amount of $166,690 and authorize manager to execute policy documents.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Jill Valdez, Human Resources Analyst Senior, for the record. Before you today is a renewal of workers' compensation excess insurance. The city is self-insured for its workers' compensation program. Excess insurance for catastrophic losses is required by law to retain the self-insured status. I am pleased to report that with the assistance of USI, our brokers, the current carrier has offered the same self-insurance retention rate of $3 million for police fires sworn and $1.5 million for all other employees. However, the premium for that coverage has increased. It's the theme of the day. The self-insurance retention rate in workers' compensation is much like the stop-loss deductible that Jen McCall talked about and the self-insurance retention that Dan Moran talked about. The main difference in workers' compensation is the term. The term for workers' compensation being the life of the claim. So any occupational injury or disease that occurs in the next fiscal year policy period, this insurance coverage would be in place until that claim or that person's injury is resolved. Could be less than a year, it could be 30 years or more. So let's talk about the change in the premium. The premium rate per $100 a payroll increased 52% this year. For the last two years, the annual rate was approximately $116,000. This year, it went up to $166,690. This is best explained by the fact that there was only one company that provided a quote to the city for this insurance product. Another notable change this year in the policy is that coverage for communicable diseases has been removed as an option as a result of COVID-19, which is common across the board. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
I have a...
Mr. Dare.
I have a question, and maybe it's just in general. It just seems like we won't get any bids back, but one, can, what is, what is happening there?
So workers' compensation is a little different from the other products. The reason for the workers' compensation bid issue is that Nevada has a very unique police-fire program for heart disease, lung disease, cancers, and hepatitis. And because of that, we have been losing carriers in the state of Nevada for a number of years. This is something we've been predicting and watching closely. It is likely to continue, and in the, we did have the same carrier Midwest for, from 1993 until about three years ago, Midwest removed themselves from the entire state of Nevada for police-fire coverage. Last time I came to you, Safety National and another company bid, they have merged. So now it's just Safety National. But the, one of the issues that they're watching closely is the changes at the legislature and expansion of these benefits, which they see as a potential risk. And because their tail is so long that when they commit to us, they're paying for claims potentially for a person's life, they have to be very careful what they're agreeing to.
What happens if these guys don't make a bid? What happens in our situation if they'll...
Great question. We are working with our broker because it is possible that I come to you someday and that is the case. So worst-case scenario is that we would have to go into the risk pool with the state, and we would be unable to be self-insured. So that's the worst-case scenario. Our broker is looking into some other options such as, if available, going to a risk pool, which has many self-insured's. So instead of being single self-insured, you'd be like a group of self-insured entities. However, if we are unable to get the insurance, it's possible that they're also unable to get that insurance. But that's one option. Another option is looking at some potential programs where we have a much higher deductible for what we're paying, and we would be, if we could get a policy, we would be insured, but we would, we would have a very high deductible. So we are exploring many different options, but it is concerning, so we don't have as many options as I would hope to be able to bring to you.
Thank you.
Any other question, Ms. Bybee?
So Jill, you mentioned no coverage for communicable diseases. That's just on the workers' comp side?
Yes.
So are they, excuse me, are they envisioning problems with whether COVID will become a workman's comp issue if someone claims? And I know the whole COVID issue, the possible litigation and where that's going to go, none of us know, you know, of what claims could be made, but anticipating, so it would, it would be all communicable, I can't even say it, diseases, but COVID is driving it, of worry.
COVID is driving it. Across the country, we have a patchwork of coverage for COVID-19. So some states have enacted laws that have provided coverage under workers' compensation for COVID-19, others have not. To date, Nevada has not. There is not clarity yet about whether that is covered in Nevada. Currently, the claims are not being accepted for the most part. There may be some circumstances in the line of duty possibly where the carrier may accept it, but there's, there's a lot of ambiguity about what may or may not be covered. And so you're seeing this across the board. It's sort of like a natural disaster that a pandemic such as this could have, could put some of these insurance companies out of business is what they're worried about, and so they're opting out of providing coverage.
Thank you.
All right, any other question from the council? Seeing none, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'm bringing it back, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the purchase of the excess insurance policy from Safety National for the city's self-funded workers' compensation...
for the city's self-funded workers' compensation program for fiscal year 2022 in the estimated amount of $166,690, and authorize the city manager to execute policy documents.
Okay, looking for a second? Mr. Anderson?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thanks Jill. All right, 9.19, consideration discussion of possible action regarding the annual performance review of the city manager Neil Krutz. Mindy Falk, ready?
Ready.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. Today, I'm here to report on the completion of the city manager's annual performance review. This year, working along with the mayor, the HR department updated the performance review process and the performance review criteria. We collected feedback on eight core competencies as well as achievements and objectives. Each of the council members and the mayor individually rated the city manager's performance. Human Resources compiled that information and has included it in a summary attached to the agenda item. In addition to reviewing his performance today, the city council may recommend and approve a merit increase and/or other contract changes, including a contract extension. The merit increase must stay within the HAB payman. Currently, Mr. Krutz has 1.17% available in his payman before he reaches the maximum. And unless there's any specific questions about the performance review, I will turn this over to city manager Krutz.
Manager?
If there aren't any questions from Mindy, my request of you today is to grant me the 1.17% to take me to the top of the range and to add a third year back on the tail end of my contract, which would extend it out through, that'd be June 30th of 2024. Right now, it's at June 30th of 2023.
Okay, questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
I want to say that I appreciated this process, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for putting that together of how we did it. I think it was good to be able to sit down and kind of talk through. I know we get to do this publicly because this is public of what we do, but there is a potent, there's need for us to continue to have relationship conversations, and I was fantastic to be able to do. And so, and I'd also like to say that I think our staff, and it includes Mayor, Maggie May, you may or there for a second. City manager Krutz, I mean, we walk in through COVID, all of the different things that has happened. I, it's, it's been an honor to be a part of our team, our staff, and I'm constantly out telling people how, just how great our staff is. But it really does matter in leadership and the team that you build, and so I, I think we've done a great job. So, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
The comments from the council, Ms. Bybee?
Yeah, I, I also would like to say I appreciated this process. I thought it was much better than what we've been doing in the past. It was, it was more thorough, we were able to just not mark a box and make comments if we wanted to or not. So, I, I appreciated that and hope that it helped you and it helped Mr. Krutz as we look at where, where we need to improve or where, you know, what our thoughts are on his performance. And I, I will have to say this past year has been such a challenge for, for all of us, for, you know, this, the city, the state, the country. But I really feel that the city of Sparks has gone through so much this year in Mr. Krutz's leadership, and his team was exemplary in that we didn't just have COVID, which was enough for all of us, but we had social unrest, we had a, we lost our mayor. We had our fire chief and our police chief both retire. We had an assistant city manager that we lost. So, we had, you know, starting, you know, last March through the end of 2020, we were all ready for 2020 to be over because there were so many challenges, and we figured out how to run the city virtually. You know, we, we, we made it work with, you know, a skeleton crew here and figured out under COVID, but just the year was, I hope, unlike anything else we're ever going to go through again. But I think Neil's leadership and his team, as well as, you know, my colleagues here and the mayor, we got through it, and I think we did really well. And I think a lot of that can be attributed to the city manager and to the mayor, and, and, and just want to thank the whole leadership team for the city because I think it's been, it's been not a year I want to do again, but one that we did. We did a good job, and I think moving forward, I, I'm the forever optimist that things will only, only continue to improve, but getting us through it, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I guess I just want to say on a scale of one or zero to six, a 4.7 doesn't sound that awesome. To me, I'm like, whoa, shoot, if you're not a straight-A student, then you're something other than that. But I want to make sure everyone understands a 4.7 is almost an excellent. The only thing above that would be outstanding. And although Neil, I think you've done a fantastic job, you don't walk on water. So, I want to say thank you for the leadership that you've shown over this last year, and even, even the things like stepping out with the willingness to take a pay cut when things were looking to be really ugly ahead of us as, as COVID was coming upon us. I, I just want to say thank you for what you've done. I believe you've done really well working with us on council, as well as your staff and, and the way that you engage them and get them to think outside the box at times. So, I appreciate that.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you.
I saw you going for the button.
You're watching my hand. First of all, is being appointed during a pandemic and having to start city council on Zoom, I do want to say thank you to the city manager and also his leadership team because I can say that anytime I have had a question or a crisis or anything like that, that it's immediately handled. And so, I do want to thank everyone and the mayor, and of course, my other city council members, that this has been a very interesting start to my appointment. But I'm looking, I'm looking forward to many more in person. And I want to thank, I want to thank Mr. Krutz, and I want to thank the senior staff very much for all your help this year.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
Second everything. It's easy, it's easy to say that one, and appreciate all you did this year, Neil. It was one heck of a year for a lot of us. We all, I think we faced it till we made it, and we're out, kind of made it. I will, I'm going to ask, put you half on the spot. Looking at the two to three performance objectives, was there one that just highlighted out to you that you're, this is the one I'm going to take care of this year? Obviously, there's a lot of important ones on there, but was there?
The, the, the one that rises to the top for me is, is the efforts we as an organization are making on the front of inclusion, equity, and diversion. Clearly, that's, I think, at the, at the, at the top of the list. I think that as an organization, we, we have multiple layers, levels, dimensions, however you want to phrase it, of focus. And that, that is a good area for our organization to focus in the coming year. And not to belittle the, the look forward. We, we've got our, our organization very pointed towards the future, you know, from, from looking, from needing additional land to expand, to what do we do with, you know, sewage, sewage treatment, disposal? You know, we as an organization are focused on the, on the long-term at the same time as we are focused on inclusion, diversity, equity, and things of that nature. We're also focused on the day-to-day operations of the city and the multiple dimensions that, that come there. But, but, you know, the, the, the one that, that I think deserves special attention in the year to come is that inclusion and equity and diversion. Not that it's new to our organization, but receiving focus is new inside of our organization. I think that, you know, for a long time, we, we as an organization have felt like we have done good outreach and that we have tried to, to be inclusive of the whole community. And what the nation and our citizens here are telling us is that we can do a lot better. There's more to it, there are, there are layer, layers of it that we don't understand. So, we're in a, in a position of we don't know what we don't know for a lot of, of that field of work. So, I, I want us to focus on it. I, I know that we're going to trip, we're going to stumble, we're going to do some things right, and we're going to, and we're going to learn some lessons too. But I think that does deserve organizational focus in the year to come.
Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you, from my standpoint, Neil was very prepared. When we, we didn't know what our future was after March 17th. We didn't know what our taxes were going to look like. We didn't know if we had enough money to, to keep people employed. We, we were preparing for the great recession all over again. I went through that once, I didn't want to do it again. So, Neil's done a great job in, in having that, that forward thinking. And, and I've appreciated, my relationship with, with Neil has grown as we try to set our city in a, in a decades-long growth period in places where we can do and making smart decisions and using smart growth. And Neil's at the forefront of helping in, in that aspect of it. And we, we see a light eye on a lot. But I will also say the executive staff is just awesome. Our, our folks that, you got it too easy. They are awesome, they do a wonderful job. And your success obviously is, is greatly hinged on, on their success. So, it's a, it's a great testament to you in picking right people and putting them in the right place. So, with that, enough gushing over Mr. Krutz, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Dare?
I move to approve an 1.17% merit increase to city manager Neil Krutz's salary effective June 21st, 2021, and to extend his employment agreement by one year through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I got a second for Ms. Bybee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Are you opposed?
Nobody opposed.
Most carries unanimously, thank you.
Mayor Lawson, if I, if I might take a moment, thank you, all, all, all six of you for, for the continued opportunity to work with you. This, I, I would not describe 2020 as a year of enjoyment. It was certainly a year of stress and of professional growth for me. I, I made, I made mistakes throughout the year. You guys always, you know, held me up, propped me up at, at certain points in, in time during the year. I greatly appreciate that. And, and you've said a lot of nice things about me today. But what I want to do is try and redirect that to the staff that's sitting out in the audience today because largely it is, is their efforts that have brought us to, to where we are able to sit here today and, and say nice things about each other. And I appreciate each and every one of them in, in the work that they've done. And I particularly, it's important to me, and I think they all know this, that I appreciate them most when they disagree with me. Because it's healthy disagreement that allows us to improve as an organization. So, I know I don't always show it very effectively, particularly in the heat of the moment. But, but I appreciate it when, when one of you stands up and says, no, wait a minute, Krutz, you got that one wrong, and here's why. And I encourage everybody to, to, to keep doing that because that's what allows us to improve as an organization, to grow as an organization, and to minimize the number of times we trip. So, thank you to, to the staff, and, and thank you for your, for your leadership in allowing us to work effectively as a staff. That is something that, that, you know, we, we have a bit of an advantage on our peers in the, in the community, is the, is the clear, consistent direction that we receive from you. And it makes our life as a group of staff members, supporting you and supporting the community, orders of magnitude easier and allows us to be more effective as a result of it, so thank you.
Perfect. Okay. You already, it's all approved. All right, 9.20. I was going to say one more thing, but I'm not going to. Consideration discussion of possible approval of a request for a tentative map for 448 lot-townhome subdivision in a site of 165.5 acres in size generally located east of Belmar Drive, Sparks, Nevada. New urban district, Meramone Plan Development Zoning District. Please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the planning commission. For the record, my name is Dany Ray, I'm the planner that is presenting this project to you today. This is a request to approve a tentative map in the Meramone Plan Development as stated for 448 homes, originally approved by the city council on May 22nd, 2017, and per NRS has expired as of May 22nd of this year for a lack of recorded final maps. The requested action effectively would renew an expired approval from this proposed subdivision. There are no changes proposed in the new tentative map. The number and design of the lots and townhomes, as well as access, grading, and landscaping proposed with this tentative map request match the recently expired tentative map STM 17-0003. The project is a part of the Meramone Plan Development and is shown here on the vicinity map outlined here in red, and is shown in relation to neighborhood plan developments. The tentative map area is located east of Belmar Drive and northeast of Los Altos Parkway, and the project area is shown in solid red. This slide shows the primary roadway accessing Belmar Drive and the emergency secondary access roadway accessing Iridium Way. These grading plans illustrate the project in its entirety, illustrating the townhome project and the access roads. Approximately 35 acres of the 165.5 acre tentative map area is proposed to be disturbed and is located where slopes are a maximum of 15%. The Meramone handbook analyzed this disturbance to slopes and incorporated that analysis into the handbook at the time of its adoption in 2005. And the project continues to meet the standards set forth in the current code for slopes, hilltops, and ridges. There will be substantial grading to provide access in a buildable area for the subdivision. Where the access roadways cross a ravine, earth and fill of up to 50 feet in height with culverts to convey stormwater will be required, making this a dam under state regulations as the fill exceeds 20 feet in height. Because of this, the plan, any plan submitted for the dam will be reviewed by the state engineer. Approximately 32 acres have a land use designation of multi-family residential MF14 in the comprehensive plan land use map and LMDR14 designation in the handbook, which both require a gross density of 14 dwellings per acre, which this project meets. This slide illustrates the proposed layout of the townhomes. The lots will be arranged to enable a series of four, six, and eight-unit townhome buildings. The two- and three-bedroom units range in size from 1,640 to 1,742 square feet and are provided with two car garages. Handbook allows for a maximum dwelling unit total yield of 1,434 residential units in the Meramone Plan Development. Approval of a final map for this project will bring the total to 1,133 residential units. As of the date of the staff report, final maps have been recorded for 685 units in Meramone. So, now comes the fun part. So far, I've discussed the request for approval of the previously approved tentative map. So, please bear with me as I spend some time going over the 12 required findings. I'll go through them as quickly as I can. Finding T1 looks at conformance with the comprehensive plan. As proposed, the subdivision is for 448 townhome lots. Townhomes are identified as missing middle housing and offers ownership opportunities at lower price points, providing an alternative to apartments and traditional detached, single-family housing, supporting goals H2, policy H2, and policy H3. The compact nature of the proposed townhome subdivision will lower per capita infrastructure costs in support of goal MG6 and policy MG11. Sidewalks are proposed on both sides of the streets adjacent to residences, while on local access roadways, there will be multi-use path sidewalks on one side of the street, which complies with policy C4. The land use designation for the project site has been in place since 2005 and has been included in build-out calculations since that time. City services, with the possible exception of meeting Sparks Fire Department's four-minute travel time standard, which is addressed in finding T10, can be provided to the site at acceptable service levels as was anticipated with the prior handbook and original tentative handbook approvals and in compliance with policy CF1. Meeting policy EV10, the provided fiscal impact analysis shows a net positive to the city of Sparks of over $5 million to the general fund and $745,000 to the road fund. Given the increase in housing prices since the current tentative map was approved, the analysis maintains property tax revenues are forecasted to generate more than $7.9 million over the 20-year time horizon of the analysis. In addition, the roadways are private and will be maintained by the HOA, saving the city an estimated annual cost of $73,200. city an estimated annual cost of $73,200. Findings T2 and T7 each relate to streets. The street network in this tentative map remains unchanged from the existing tentative map and is consistent with the road design parameters in the handbook, such as road capacity and other dimensional standards, which was contemplated in the handbook at its adoption. The project also is in conformance with the city's street master plan and access roadways connecting to Belmar Drive and Iridium Way, making finding T2. Finding T7 focuses on impacts to public streets. The applicant provided an updated traffic study that shows trip generation for this proposed subdivision estimated at 2,371 average daily trips, with 171 AM peak hour and 206 PM peak hour trips. With the extension of left-turn lanes at the intersection of Los Altos Parkway and Vista Boulevard, this study finds the existing and current under-construction public roadway network is sufficient to accommodate the traffic generated by this subdivision. City staff has reviewed the traffic impact study and concurs with the analysis provided, as does the RTC in their comment letter. Per finding T3, this application was distributed to the agencies that provide these basic services and administrative environmental and health laws, and no written comments were provided. The final stormwater and drainage plan for the development must be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to recordation of the final map. That's condition number five. Making, finding T4, the developer has estimated that the domestic water requirement for the development is 73.8 acre-feet per year. Municipal water service will be provided by the Chucky Meadows Water Authority, and water rights must be in place or dedicated prior to recordation of final maps, as provided for, in condition nine. Finding T5 is concerned with availability of utilities to serve the site. The developer estimates that 448 townhome lots will generate 392,000 gallons of sewage per day. The city's sewer model accounts for the level of development proposed with this tentative map request. The applicant is required to provide evidence that there's adequate sanitary sewer conveyance and treatment capacity to serve the project prior to the recordation of a final map, as condition number three. NV Energy will provide electrical and natural gas services. Electric telephone and cable services will be extended underground within the roadway right-of-way to serve this development. Finding T6 considers the availability and accessibility of public service of schools, police, transportation, and parks. The Washoe County School District has estimated that this tentative map will add 26 new students to Moss Elementary, 12 new students to Men Dive Middle School, and eight new students to Reed High School. Each of these schools will remain under base capacity for at least five years, based on Washoe County School District projections. The Sparks Police Department will provide services to the site. The roadway network for Miramonte Plan Development was designed to accommodate a total of 1,434 residential lots, and the maximum number of lots has not yet been reached. RTC provided a comment letter in response to this tentative map request, indicating that the applicant will be responsible for maintaining a policy level of service, LOS, of D, along Belmar Drive and Los Altos Parkway. While no park is proposed in this tentative map, recreational amenities are provided in the townhome development and the common areas, such as group picnic areas, volleyball and basketball carts, playground, fit stations with a running trail. In the central community building area, there is proposed a swimming pool and playground and other amenities. Nearby is the Sage Canyon Park located in the Miramonte Phase 3A development. A one-and-a-half acre park is described in the handbook that will be located in the north of the project site and will be developed in a future proposal. Finding T8 addresses floodplain, slopes, and soil. Properties located within a FEMA Zone X and is located outside the 100-year flood hazard zone. Based on the preliminary hydrology reports submitted with the tentative map, the project will not adversely be affected by the floodplain, nor will it affect properties downstream. The development has been designed in accordance with the appropriate standards and is in compliance with previous studies. The proposed primary and secondary access roads to the site will cross a large ravine that runs along the west side of the site. The grading plans for the roadway crossings show the earthing fill up to 50 feet in height with culverts that convey stormwater. Due to the height of the fill, both roadway crossings are considered dams, must be approved by the state engineer, as condition number five. The proposed townhouse development will disturb approximately 35 acres of the 165.5 acre site. Of the remaining 130 acres, 111.5 acres will be reserved as undisturbed open space, and the remainder of the site will be utilized as common area. The proposed tentative map conforms to the findings outlined in the handbook. Overall, this represents the site as 21% developed, 4% access roads, and 81% undisturbed open space after development. A final geotechnical report will be required to be approved by the city engineer prior to the issuance of any building permits, condition number 12. Any recommendations from that report shall be incorporated into the building permits to accommodate for soil conditions. Finding T9 requires consideration of outside agency responses. The responses were addressed in my discussion of finding T6. Finding T10 considers the availability of fire protection services. Fire and emergency medical service will be provided by the Sparks Fire Department, and Fire Station 4 is the nearest fire station. The project site may be located outside the Sparks four-minute travel time standard. Further analysis to determine if the project meets the four-minute travel time standard must be submitted prior to approval of a final map. This analysis determines that this standard will not be met. Additional mitigation measures to be approved by the fire chief will be required prior to recordation of any final map, condition 14. Finding T11 considers other impacts identified in staff's analysis of the proposal. Identified are earthen fill, landscaping, and architectural elevations. Condition 4 requires that a landscaping and irrigation plan be approved by city staff prior to recordation of the final map. Condition 11 requires architectural elevations that comply with the handbook must be approved must be shown to city staff and approved by the administrator prior to the recordation of a final map. For finding T12, the posting of the agenda and the meetings of the Planning Commission and City Council serve as public notice. This is not a public hearing, and no public comment is required. Staff has not received any public comment as of 12 noon today. Planning Commission recommends approval of this tentative map application, and this concludes my presentation. I am here for any questions.
Questions from the council. Ms. Bybee.
The only question I had is, with this first tentative map that expired, how long, if this is, if we approve this today, how long is the tentative map period?
Four years.
Four years, okay, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Dany, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly. So this was approved back in, initially, the Miramonte development as a whole, back in 2005?
Yes, that it was contemplated in the handbook, yes.
Okay, and then, as I understand it, there were three revisions within City Council in 2017, actually approving this tentative map that we're now looking at again. Is that correct?
On May 22nd, 2010, council approved this tentative map exactly as it's being presented to you today, with no changes.
Okay, and so then, with the current developments that are going in, the vistas, what's going on, and plus this tentative map, was this all calculated in the initial plans for the vistas and Miramonte, as far as the traffic and what roadways would be required?
You've got me there. I don't know exactly. Perhaps Amber can speak to that.
Good afternoon. For the record, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. 2017, there was a traffic report was done that was a full buildout of this area, and it included all of the available things that had already been approved but not built, as well as all of the planned developments that were coming in. This 448 units was a part of that full buildout, and it was concluded that acceptable levels of service on the roads as they are.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the queue down at the bottom of Los Altos and Vista, that only addition or change would need to be made to meet the requirements of the, what, three projects under construction in the tentative map here?
That was the only improvements relative to Los Altos. There may be other improvements on Vista, but not necessarily related to the developments along Los Altos. But yes, you're correct, widening or extending, excuse me, the turn pocket as Vista was the recommendation of the full buildout report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, other questions from the council? Any comments from the public on this item? None? I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve tentative map for 448 lot townhome subdivision on a site 165.5 acres in the size generally located east of Belmar Drive, Sparks, Nevada, in the NUD New Urban District, Miramonte Plan Development Zoning District, adopting findings T1 through T12. And the fact supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report and subjecting conditions of approvals 1 through 17.
Okay, I'm looking for a second. Ms. Vanderwell?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, although I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us on to item number, there are none under 10. We're going to, 11.1, a second reading. Madam Clerk, are you going to read that, or am I reading it? If you want me to read it, I'll zoom right through. Okay, I didn't want to cut you off the balance, huh?
This is a second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible adoption of Bill 2783 to amend Sections 20.03.030, outdoor processing, and 20.03.040, temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow temporary outdoor processing, including but not limited to rock crushing on or near residentially zoned land associated with approved projects and subject to use standards.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to the public for comment. I have two comment cards, one from Alexis.
Mr. Mayor.
How do I say that?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to give a presentation on the item?
Not really.
Okay.
No, just kidding. I'm sorry, Jim, I was just kidding. Let me call that back to the dais. There we go. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is a long meeting for us.
Long council meeting, yes.
Especially after a year and a half.
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, presenting on the item as outlined by Clerk Underman. Thank you. You may be wondering, what is outdoor processing? Well, for the most part today, the reason this came to our attention is the desire to do rock crushing. And the council may very well wonder, what does rock crushing look like? A video that we're going to play, it's just about less than a minute long, if we could put that up on the screen. So what happens is, as a site is graded on greenfield development, new construction, the bulldozers and such go out and begin to grade the site as you review and grading plans on tentative maps and such. The grading pulls up such, some of the bigger rocks, as you're seeing in the video. Desire is that those rocks could be crushed to a smaller size to be put right back down on the site, so they don't have to be hauled off. They can put back in, be put back into the material as it's graded for the, whether it be housing or commercial in time. You can see as it spits it out on the other side on the conveyor belt, it is far smaller than the original rocks that were going into the rock crusher. So rock crushing, by definition, comes under the definition of outdoor processing. Earlier this year, Councilman Dare you asked that this city manager look at amending, bring back an item to look at amending the code. Allow for this, the council ultimately provided that direction for us to do that. But they did give the council out that you wanted to make sure we included a public outreach component. So we did that, and I coordinated with Julie Doer, help creating that video, and the fancy graphics that go in with the video. I don't know how to do that stuff, but it really came out nice. We sent that video out through the Nextdoor app, Facebook, and Instagram. We found that we had 3,000. Proud of that. I was proud of the amount of views that we got on that video, and tell Councilman Dare said that millions book earlier in our council meeting today, so I was a little humbled, I suppose. But we did feel that we got some good present, good public outreach in that respect. The consensus of the public was that this should be permitted, as long as that it was conditioned. What they did like, the public sentiment that I could get, if this reduces the truck trips on our local transportation network, that they're all for it. Additionally, a comment, the completion of projects, they're all for that as well. But again, Councilman Bybee, I know it would be a concern of yours to make sure that it has standards associated with it, and I'll get into those in a few minutes. Additionally, we met with the, by direction, we met with the industry. We had conducted two meetings with the industry. The first meeting was exactly what was their desire, what did they hope from a code amendment of this respect. After the input from the public and that first meeting with the industry, staff crafted standards for their review. We met a second time, and they got to review a draft of what we had put together. I think it was a successful meeting. They looked at those drafts, made suggested modifications. We had discussions, and ultimately, we provide for the Planning Commission's consideration, which they did at their May meeting. I'm going to have a few slides for your consideration. The red, does the red show up enough for you guys to see? What we have here is the line-out, strike-out, proposed new language in red. This would be the section of the municipal code in the zoning ordinance that would potentially allow for temporary outdoor processing, which would be associated with the rock crushing. I want to bring your attention to the item at the bottom that says temporary outdoor processing operations may be only permitted upon obtaining a temporary use permit, allowing for the temporary outdoor processing. That would be the section of code that we're adding. The part in applicability that we've struck is because it says temporary outdoor processing is not a permitted type of use. The second component of this amendment, I've paraphrased so that we don't have to go through all of the sections of the code. But we're looking at, number one says only for a previously approved project that has a permit. We want to make sure that this is genuinely supporting a project of record. It is not something that is just being done as a business to support other construction. That all crushed material shall be used on-site for the project of record and within one-mile radius of where it's being sourced. So if they're grading it, it should be used on that project. Now, there is a component that if you get outside of the one mile, you can re-review it with staff to see if staff believes it's an appropriate measure to allow to go just outside of one mile. That was a request of the industry, that we would have that flexibility to permit. Maybe it's a mile and a half. Well, maybe they don't need to take everything up and move it for a mile and a half. The next one was, the outdoor rock crushing or outdoor processing should not occur outside of 500 feet to which a final inspection, excuse me, of a residence to which a final inspection has been issued. What does this mean? Well, as subdivisions begin to be built out, they have structures that begin to rise on the site. Now, roofs go on them, walls go on them, windows do, but it doesn't necessarily mean that our building division has issued a final inspection or allowed someone to occupy the residence. So if no one is living in them and no one can live in them, we felt that it was okay to be within 500 feet of something that was inhabitable. So if it's an inhabitable structure, they need to maintain that 500 feet. If it's just a structure that's been built on the site, they can still conduct the rock crushing because no one's inhabiting the home. Why did we pick 500 feet? Well, through solicitation of the industry, I was provided a noise study, and that was included as an exhibit in your staff report. We identified that at, I'm going to read the numbers to make sure that I get them right, that at 25 feet, we had 83 decibels. At 500 feet, it was 56 decibels. Now, a vacuum operates at about 70 decibels. Normal conversation is 60 decibels. Normal conversation is 60 decibels and rain is 50 decibels. So at 500 feet, again, we're at 56 decibels. So we believe staff's recommendation of the Planning Commission was that was a reasonable distance to be from an occupied home. The public requested we have operation hours on them. That is what you see there in number four, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever comes first. In the winter time, in late December, when we're near the winter solstice, we would, the industry would have to, to cease operations at sunset. As the sun's setting around 5 o'clock, they would need to cease then. In the summertime, this time of year, when the days are long, they would be able to operate up until 7:00 p.m. Additionally, because of that, there would be no need for artificial lighting on the site. The industry wanted to ensure as well as the public that this was portable in nature, that they didn't become permanent structures out in residential areas that began as a, began to be a use that was helping, helping development all over the area. So those standards are that they have to be like a trailer. They can't be on a foundation. That was how we wanted to ensure, the portable in nature part. And then the next standard is not necessarily a standard in terms of mitigating the impacts. It was an opportunity that staff used to provide direction to someone who wants to use this standard to tell them this is what staff's going to be looking for in an application to do this. Air quality permits, make sure you have those in line, your dust, your dust permits, how you're going to treat it, your circulation plan and track out plan. When sometimes on newly developed sites, mud comes, they get it on their tires, they go out onto our pavement and that tracks out onto the streets. We want to make sure there's a plan to mitigate that from happening. Mr. Mayor, it's staff's opinion that this use can be mitigated and we believe it can be mitigated in a manner that actually provides better compatibility with the neighborhood. I think that you could make a case that not permitting this use temporarily could be more detrimental to the neighborhood than, than actually permitting it. And Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously and staff recommended approval to the Planning Commission. I'm available for any questions.
All right, questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
I just want to thank you and I, I really appreciate hearing back from our constituents and how that all went as well and then even taking out to, to our businesses and the different people that are in the middle of it. And so I, I do see this as a benefit. As you said at the end, that it's, I, I think it's going to help things and not just be something that's another thing. So, and if it mitigates any kind of traffic, I, I think that that right there wins a win, win for sure. And air quality and all the stuff that goes with that. So I, I really think this is a very good use of this, so thank you. I'll wait and make a motion when you're ready, but I know there might be more questions.
Questions from the council? Anyone else? Ms. Bybee?
Jim, I'd like to thank you for the work on this. I think it's really thorough. I think that it's temporary use, that we're really clear on, on the mitigations, on the requirements. You've really kind of hit all the points that were my concern. And obviously, you know, when, you know, when, when you're living in any of our wards where there's construction, people in the neighborhoods think it's going to happen right next to them. And I don't want, you know, my constituents thinking that right next to their house they're going to have this big rock crusher that's going all day and all hours. So I think all of the mitigation that you've included up here is you, you did an outstanding job. I love the input from residents, from the industry, I think was really good because that's helpful in determining, you know, what you came up with. And I think that it's not only for our roads, you know, saving those trucks from traveling on our roads, but it also, if it can speed up the, the construction time, that's another bonus because once again, we're in a huge housing crisis of not having enough housing throughout the community and everything that we can do to help alleviate that and mitigate that. And this hopefully will make projects go a little faster because of the ability to do this on site. So thank you. I appreciate your work.
All right, anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, I got it. I'm going to open it up to the public for comment. Alexis, you ready? We'll start with you. Yeah, we're, we're buying dinner later.
Fantastic.
Councilman Dare is.
Thank you. Alexis Motorex with the Nevada Chapter Associated, General Contractors, representing commercial construction in northern Nevada. And we are fully supportive of the proposed changes in item 11.1. We'd like to thank your staff for including us in their public outreach report, reflects industry and public input. It's sound policy that makes sense for those developments with no nearby neighbors and we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Morgan, you're up next, public comment. You know, you sat here for three hours. You might as well speak.
Do I get Alexis's time?
No.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Dan Morgan, on behalf of the Builders Association of Northern Nevada. Mr. Krutz, congratulations. The builders, well, first let me make one note. It dawned on me about four minutes ago. This is the first time I've appeared in front of this council in a very, I think Mayor Martini was sitting in your chair, Mr. Mayor, and you were the only one at that day.
All right, move along.
Anyway, we are fully in support of, we are fully in support of the code change complement, Jim and your staff for reaching out to the industry and working with us. He was, he was very cordial and very willing to listen and very willing to work with our, and hear our concerns from the building. We are fully in support of it and I can't tell you how much I enjoyed sitting with you all this afternoon for the first time in about 14 years, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, if not, I'm going to bring it back to the dais. Mr., we have any quite more questions from the, from the council? All right, Mr. Dare, I assume you want to make a motion?
I'd like to, if that's okay.
Please.
I move to adopt Bill 2783 amending Sections 20.03.030 Outdoor Processing and 20.03.040 Temporary Uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow temporary including but not limited to rock crushing on or near residential zoned land when associated with approved projects.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Say goodbye, Ms. Bybee. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Most carries unanimously. This is one of those things, when I first heard about it, you know, your knee jerk reaction is, no, I don't want to do this. But then, once we talked about it and we talked about the benefits, the benefits far outweigh the knee jerk reaction. So good job, staff, Uriington's finest, Mr. Rundle. We appreciate all the hard work. Okay, we're almost to the end. Final public comment, 12.1. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk? Bill? Bill?
Haven't seen him in a long time.
Bill, come on. Come on. Bill, it's been a year and a half since we've seen your smiling face.
I'm not going to make sure you remember that.
We need a picture, Jim. Julie, get a picture.
I'm going to have a seizure.
To the new mayor, I know you're going to do a great job at this.
Thank you.
And you're getting better as the day went longer too. And to the city council members, for the record, my name is Bill Wagner. I have two subjects, matters I want to talk about.
Hey, Bill?
The one?
Will you pull that microphone down by your mouth a little bit more?
Okay, sure, I'm sorry. Now you can hear me, huh?
Yeah, you're, you're saying some important stuff. We want to make sure it gets on the record.
Okay. Veterans roadway. We talked about this the last time we got together. You've given the name to Ron Smith. If that would, would not work, how about a side street crossing? The veterans roadway. What do you think? Do something like that?
We're not agendas to speak to you from the dais, so we can't answer yet, but afterwards we can.
Oh, great, okay. Number two, sidewalk. My neighbor Ron King, whom some of you know, had a neighbor fall on the sidewalk near what Mr. King called the city of Sparks. Asked for some suggestions. The problem was solved within two days. Without Mr. King's knowledge, your city took care of it. I would personally like to thank you, the council members, and those who completed the project. Thank you very much. Because I, I've been told that if it was in Reno, it would have never gotten done. But it got done by you folks and the people there. Much.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, we're going to close public comment. Announcements from the city council, city manager, mayor. Mr. Krutz?
Thank you very much for the prompt. I have three things to announce.
Okay.
The first one is Wednesday, June 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are going to host a Hello Summer Celebration at Rock Park. We're going to have the band Whitewater Retoold performing for us. We're going to have food trucks out in the parking lot and inviting everyone across the city to, to show up, celebrate summer and help us enjoy our beautiful river and, and park. So excited to be able to do these kinds of community things again. So this is an attempt to kick off summer. The second thing is that I want to announce Monday, June 28th, at 10:00 a.m. Mayor Lawson is going to deliver his first State of the City address. During his, his video and live speech, Mayor Lawson will discuss his citywide initiatives and will discuss how many COVID-related, COVID-19 relief programs put the city, that the city put in place during the pandemic. We're going to host a reception out in the foyer afterwards with some, some light drinks and light, light refreshments. None of the adult kind, since it's so early in the day and we're on city property, we don't do that. And then the last one is just for the, for the city staff. I'm hoping that you all will take a few minutes and hang out with me after the meeting is over and our elected officials have, have moved on with their day just to kind of chat about the day that we had here, so thank you.
All right, anyone from the council? Come on, Christopher.
Have a great night and enjoy your dinner. It's been fantastic.
All right, all right, well, we relied on technology during the pandemic. Today, it kind of bit us a little bit, but I'm sure we'll get it worked out and
We will.
Everything is a learning experience. So with that, we're going to call for item 13, which is, for the good of the order, we're adjourned.